All right. My apologies. Okay, so let's call to order the Council Goals Meeting, August 30th, 2022. Because it is 5:34. So should I pass it on to you? Okay, great. I don't know if we need to do roll call and all that.
No, this is, uh, thank you, Mayor. This is a work session, so this is a, we're aiming for an informal setting here tonight, and with the goal of having a good dialogue amongst council and have a good conversation. Council has noted since we have quite a few new council members even from where we were earlier in the year, that it would be prudent to do some goal-setting with council prior to going into the biennial budget process and into the, how we spend money for the next two years. So with that in mind, I've asked Marilyn Beard, who is a very experienced and skilled facilitator and has a ton of local, years and years of local government experience as well, to come in and facilitate our discussion tonight. And so, thank you so much, Marilyn, for agreeing to join us. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Marilyn and let her run the show.
Okay, thank you. So you can hear me now? Mic's on? Okay. Well, I'm glad to be here with you. And I, um, I did talk to some of you about, a little bit about my background, and I had worked for, in the, for city governments for about 30 years. I think it was longer, but I think I'm just going to stop there because that sounds old enough. But I, I was a finance director at one point, and then I went to the city manager's office as a deputy city manager. But during my whole career, I've been doing facilitating, meeting facilitating, and so I really have enjoyed it. And so I've picked that up as a post-retirement gig to do. And so I'm happy to be here with you. I will, um, I'll talk to you about what, how the meeting's going to go. It's going to be very interactive with you, and you're going to be talking to each other. And so that's, I'll tell you more about how that is going to go. So if I had to describe, I tried to, I try to use as few words as possible, but sometimes, you know, bureaucrats just don't, aren't very good at that. But if I was to describe what I think the outcome for this meeting, the retreat objective, is to identify city council goals and prioritize them a little bit in order to provide direction to staff as they're putting together the budget. So when they present the budget to the city council, if you agree on those, at whatever point you agree on those goals, you should be able to see those show up and be related to in the budget. The city manager will say, this is how, here are your goals, and here are the things in the budget that fund those. So, Retusia, can you hear me okay?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. So, I don't do ground rules as much as I do some, try to get some agreement with you about what, you know, how we work together. And I like to think of this as, it's an inclusive meeting. By inclusive, I mean that everyone participates and allows everybody else to participate. Diverse opinions are valued, but I would say that if you disagree with somebody, take a minute to, before you rebut, take a minute to ask them for clarification. Is this what you meant? And then, once you've done that, and if you're still disagreeing, then you can, you know, state your point. But in all ti, in all cases, I'm going to help you try to find areas of commonalities because there always are some, okay? So that's part of my job. Be present. Saying, you know, you don't need your email to do this meeting, and you don't need, hopefully you don't need your, I always, always tell the, when the staff is here, that only the first responders could have their phones on. Hopefully, you're not going to respond to any emergencies. And this is your treat. This is the city council's retreat. And so it's a chance for you to work together toward the meeting objectives. The city staff is here, some few city staff are here, to answer questions, to be a resource for you if you need them. Otherwise, they're just going to listen and help me do the logistics of the meeting. I would say be good to each other. I'll, do I have to repeat these when Kent comes in? No, okay. Yeah. But I will say be good to each other, be patient. We should be done at 9:30 at the latest, okay? But the time's going to go by pretty fast. I think you'll be amazed at how fast the time goes by. And we will take a break about halfway through. Any questions? You know, that would be great if you could just, you know, give me some kind of indication. And sometimes I'll look at your face and I know you're trying to say something, and I'll say, do you have something to say, like, right now?
Yeah, just in the past.
Yeah.
Where if somebody wants, that way, you know, kind of, you can keep talking, but people can go together.
Right. Don't feel like you have to do that. Whoa, that just got really different. Is it going to stay that? That's better, okay. Don't feel like you have to do that because I will be looking for you. If you want to do that, go ahead. And so that's part of my job, is to keep track of who looks like they want to say something. So I've got a few slides and...
We can always just do this.
It's, it's on. Well, I mean, I, I can hear it. It's right here. It's here, and it's here.
Marilyn, before you go into the slides, I think one of the comments that had come up before this meeting was actually about public comment. And I think there was discussion saying we should let everybody know that there'd be more opportunities. So I don't know if Scott wants to do that, or if our mayor wants to do that and clarification before we start the meeting.
So do you want to amend the agenda to include public comment? And if so, at the beginning, or the end, or both? That's a good point. Thank you.
What do you all feel? To have public comment, or to amend, or to... I probably need to turn this on. So earlier, we had public comment about not having public comment in an email, and our city manager had mentioned that there will be ample opportunity when we do budget discussion. And so one is for initial review and final action for the budget. So I don't know if we want to wait until then. Go ahead.
So Mayor, I'm sorry. I apologize. I wasn't, clearly wasn't clear in that email. What I was saying is, as part of this process, we will be coming back to you. We're not going to wordsmith tonight. Mayor, I'm, I'm jumping ahead from what Marilyn's going to talk about, but we're not going to finalize it tonight. We're going to go back and take all of your ideas and try to put it in some semblance of actual goals and bring them back to you at, at a meeting for you to consider, and then we'll bring them back one more time for final action. So there'll be, that's why I was suggesting, there's two different opportunities before we get to final action on the council goals that are separate from this evening's discussion.
I think if we're going to, if we were going to do public comment tonight, it would, it should be at the end of the meeting. At this stage, it's too late for someone to make public comment at the beginning of the meeting anyway, but we might have kind of missed the boat on announcing that we're taking public comment because people may not be ready with our comments because they already felt there was no public comment tonight. So if we're going to add it, it would, I would think it'd make more sense to add it to the end of the meeting. But if we feel like maybe the meeting runs long, but the, the public, and we need to kind of state it toward the end of the meeting, when the public can make more public comment on what we've discussed tonight, so maybe at the next time, we come back to this, these subjects.
The only other alternative I propose is that we could actually do it before our break. So we technically go on break. That will be in a couple hours. That would be a reasonable time for people that are burning with something to be able to get that out if they needed to do that. So that would work, too.
So are we kind of like split? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
So, in general, I think we should always have public comment at meetings, workshops, whatever. I just think, whatever the topic, we should have that. Because we didn't give notice that there was, I'm fine if we just want to let people know that they can provide comment at those other two opportunities because even if we tell people now, if they're not watching or whatever, there was no public notice that there was. So in all fairness, it probably makes sense at this point to just do it at the future times. But I do think especially for goal-setting, it's probably one of the most important meetings we have, so making sure that people know they can provide comment and would probably be good going forward. And I'm sure we'll have more retreats, so there'll be more opportunities in the future.
I agree with that. Retusia, did you have...
No, I was just going to say I agree with that, that, that there will be more opportunities for public comment. But I just wanted that to be clarified before we start getting into the meeting.
Yes, I appreciate it. And I know we received, like, probably three or four via email, which is, of course, always an option. So I think for this evening, we will keep it as is, not amend the agenda, and then we will be back in a week for all of the public comment. Thank you.
All right. So I like to, I'm a policy person, I'm a policy wonk, I'm, I'm one of those, I'm a bureaucrat. But I like to start with, I have a couple of models that I like to show to kind of set the stage for what you're about to do and how it relates to everything else that you do as a city. So we need to shift over to the PowerPoint. That's not it. This is not the strategic planning cycle. Here we go. Okay.
That's rock and a hard place.
Yeah. There you go. Okay, go ahead. Okay, so this is a little diagram that I, I like visuals. For me, I work with visuals. And so this is the strategic planning process, and pretty much all cities go through this. It's an iterative process, and it starts with your community vision, where you want to be as a, as a city. And that is generally part of your comprehensive plan update. From those, then you would develop council goals that get you closer to that vision. Then you start doing strategic plans and master plans, like a PROS plan or a transportation plan. You know, then you start doing those five to 10-year plans that, you know, give you some look at the future. And then through the resource allocation, through the budget and the CIP, you allocate resources to those areas. And then from that, you get a work plan, okay? And you develop a work plan, and you work the plan, and you plan the work, and, and then the staff implements. And then you have to do a, some way to be able to measure if you're getting where you want to go. This is usually, that's, in an ideal world, you have a way, an objective, and you know where you want to be by when, okay? And through this whole process, you've got community involvement, and there's lots of opportunities for that. And we can, you know, I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we go through that because I heard that is an interest from a lot of folks. So, and then you start over, or you just go back to the top and start with the vision. Now, I will say that it is not, it's not linear because you don't do a vision statement. Hello? Kent, nice to meet you. We just started. And so we, in fact, you're probably, and I'll mention this later, you do your, your vision statement every eight, 10 years with your comp plan process. You might, you know, set council goals, but you might want to revisit them every couple of years in line with the budget. And your strategic plans, those are like, those are usually longer-term plans, they're not to-do lists for the next year. They take five, you know, seven, 10 years to do. But you will always then be looking back to see what you're getting accomplished. So now, you do have, you were provided with a copy of the work plan, the city's work plan from, I don't know how, Marge? Okay. And you did get panned out on the comp plan process. And so, so one of the things, so if you look at this, look at this little diagram, where do you think you're at?
I just had a... The vision statement?
Uh huh.
I don't believe we received a final version of the mission, or the vision statement.
That would have been adopted in your last comprehensive plan, which was a while ago, right?
Right, but we're working on a new one.
You're working on a new one, right?
Yeah, I was going to say that. I don't, I mean, are we trying to finalize that as part of our goals, or we should be using the one that we have, right?
No, I, I think this is, you are pointing out Marilyn's point at the moment.
It's a good example of how it's, it's not linear. Because here you are, you're in the middle of the, you're about, you're in the middle of the budget, preparing the budget, and you're going to be putting these master plans in there, and you're, you're not, you're just starting your comp plan process. So it, things get a little bit out of sequence from time to time, and what you have to just remember is that, you know, the community involvement part is always there. You're going to go back and restart with your vision because sometimes you have to change where the ship is headed, the long-term vision of where, where, because things change, communities change. Okay, so that's the strategic planning process. So when you look at this, and you always have, you have opportunities throughout the years to be strategic in how you do things. The comp plan update has a lot of elements to it that I heard from you, that you wanted to spend some time with on the phone calls. And so it, you're going to have some in-depth conversations about some of those areas. And that comp plan process is a, is an opportunity for you to be strategic about how you, where you want to go, how you're going to get there, opportunity to talk to the community about where you're going and what you want. And so that's a, and that covers a lot of things. You have the timeline and a little bit of what the elements are. And there are requirements within the growth management, there are things you have to have in there, but you can bring other things in there that may not be required by the growth management law, but that you want to include in that process. So it's another opportunity for you to talk to the community and talk to each other about where you're going. The other thing is that through these processes, you start to learn what you don't know. You have to know what you don't know. And when you've realized that you don't know something, that's when you study, you do a study, you do some training, you do whatever it is that you do to answer the questions that you need to answer. And then the other real opportunity to be strategic is, is in the budget process because that's where you resource these different activities, and that's how they get done, okay? So in order to start them and to have them done, you, you have to resource them. So in your work plan, and I saw, I looked at the work plan thing that you have, and there's some things that you wanted to know, which ones are mandatory, which ones are critical, which ones are optional. There weren't that many optional ones in there, as I recall. But are you going to maybe, I'm wondering how that work plan presentation, was that, did that work for you? Is there anything, because I, I know you asked for more on the work plan, so was, was everything in there that you needed when you asked me about that?
I, I will, I will share that I think three of our council members weren't involved in that, so they might, they might have a hard time answering that question, which is one of the challenges, obviously, that, which is why we're here to some extent.
Yeah, and I don't want to point out the obvious, but it, it was done before you were here. So if you don't understand how it was, that's completely understandable, yes?
I mean, I, you know, I think the staff did a, a fine job on the work plan. For me personally, I would like to see us, as we move forward, to be able to have a tie-in with our goals and those work plan items, to be able to, as you have down there, right, the report back, to be able to make that something we can tie together more. Again, that's more work on the staff, and so they will need resources to do that, but I think that being able to align that and to be able to mark on there which ones are, you know, some sort of regulatory mandate, and, and especially the dates on them, right? Because sometimes it isn't just about if the item is optional, it's like, this must be done by this date. So it's not only like, you can't move, like, you can't move it, period, right? And so to, to have those things highlighted would also be helpful. And again, I know it's a lot more work for staff, so these are our wish lists, certainly not edicts, but I think all of those things would certainly help us as we move through these sort of periodic updates and reviews.
So once you get at, maybe a template that, when you describe what you'd like to see on a work plan, then, once they get that template in place, then that's done, and you don't have to keep redoing it. And so, you know, get, make sure you're, you've got a template that helps you do what you want to do with it, so that it's meeting your, your planning needs. And there's a lot of good examples out there, some of them that are very high-level and some of them that are dangerously deep and detailed. And so, you know, pick what works for you, as, and, and interestingly, for you, as you are now a new council. And so what worked in the past isn't necessarily going to work now. Oh, it might, I don't know. So one of the things that you do in this strategic planning process as a council is to stay at the 30,000-foot level, to stay at the policy level, always be looking at the big picture. Sometimes you're going to dive into the weeds, it's just sort of inevitable, you're going to want to do that. But for policy purposes, you really not need to stay at that level. All right. So I was, you know, I just got a little reality check here because you're in this process, it's so neatly planned out here, it looks so easy. It's not. There are challenges to achieving this, some unique to you and some that are common for all elected bodies. And for instance, the strategic, as I said, the strategic planning process isn't linear. You go, you have these little mini loops that go on before you go through your bigger process. You have new council members. This is, some of your first budget process, your first comp plan update, your first a lot of things. So that's, that, you know, presents a challenge. When you get to the budget process, it's a challenge to sort out wants versus, versus needs. What do you want versus what do you need? That's the priority process that you're going to need to go through and sort it out. And that is not easy. That is a hard thing to do because there's almost never enough money to go around. And I don't know anybody that's got too much money, except maybe Bellevue, I don't know. And so, not, and everything's not within the city council's control. There are legal mandates, there are rules and things that you have to follow and things that you have to do, and so not everything's in your control, and that's challenging. And you're in the process of hiring a new city manager. You're right in the middle of this whole thing, you're going to bring in a different person, maybe a different personality, and integrating that person into your processes is, will take some time. And so that, I think, can also be kind of disruptive to your normal planning process. But on the opportunities, and I think all of these challenges are also opportunities. You have a new council, new perspectives, you know, new ideas, and that's a really good thing, that's a really refreshing thing for you, to be able to work together. You seem to be, you seem to feel that you're more philosophically aligned, I mean, not completely, but you're more aligned than, than maybe you've been in the past, so that makes things a little easier. You also understand that you need to work together to accomplish things. And so that was also a theme I heard, is that, yeah, we want to work, we need to work together, we need to work together effectively. And a new city manager is also an opportunity for them to bring in some ideas and strategies and tools for you to use that help you be effective. So you take your challenges and look at them as opportunities, and, and you're, you're not in bad shape. I mean, I think that there's lots of hope for you. Yay, there's hope. So, so at this point, we are going to go start with the goal-setting process, and this is where you're going to start to get your hands dirty. So goal statements, so goal statements, let's see. Ah, no, I know. Go to the next slide because this was the other one I wanted to show you, and this is called "The Flight Path." And this is, this has to do with roles. And because you have, from the very large, big-picture purpose vision down to the day-to-day work, and there is a, as you move from policy to implementation, the council is more involved on the policy side, and the council or, and the staff is less involved. As you start moving closer, where you start putting together plans, once you've set policies, then the staff has to take it and implement it for you. And then, then you don't do that, that's the day-to-day work. So you're here at the purpose vision, strategic goals, priorities, oversight, accountability, and then after that, it's the staff and they do the work. So it's a good way to just think about things, about staying up at that, I said 30,000, they said 50,000, but still, it's way up there. Okay. All right. So goal statements. So the idea for tonight is, goal statements are high-level statements about where you want to go with different type, different topics, different things that you do. And it's, it's what you want to achieve. It's why you want to do things. It's the why about your, why you want, I want to do this. Well, why? To achieve this. And so they're pretty big lofty statements, and they sort of guide, are the guiding light for you going forward. There's no right and a wrong way to set goals. Every city council will do it their own way, at their own level, but generally speaking, what will happen is that they'll go through some process like you're doing now, you're starting, identify some goals, and out of that, you're going to get a work plan, activity items, things that you're going to do, and you're going to put some timeframes on that. And then out of that, you're going to have some way of measuring, whether you're achieving that or not, do that measurement. And so you have objectives, which are, who's going to accomplish, what, by when? And you have, and that, then, that's how you get your work plan. And so that's generally, what you'll see is that most cities have. And so I brought some sample goal statements for you from some other cities nearby, just to show you how different they can be. So, next? Ooh. Okay, so Issaquah. And I took environmental sustainability from each of them because everybody has an environmental goal, it turns out. So this is Issaquah, and this is their goal statement. This is where they want to go, is to find, by its passion for access to and protection of the natural environment, residents hold in high regard Issaquah's iconic natural setting, and on and on. They want to engage and protect and improve the environment. Success will come from active stewardship by, by the community and its partners, and so forth. And so that's a pretty, it's high-level, it's pretty general, it, it could fit, you know, many cities, but you want to make your statements relevant for your city, and that's what we're going to try to work towards. So go to the next one. Oh, so, and this is where they, this is, this is their measurement, this is Issaquah's measurement, you'll see at the bottom, that's how they know they're getting there. Next. This is from Kirkland. Sustainable Environment. Kirkland is committed to the protection of the natural environment through an integrated natural resource management system, and the council goal, that is the goal statement, protect our natural environment through sustainable goals and practices to meet the needs of community members for a healthy environment and clean energy without compromising the needs of future generations. There's a lot in there, okay? But it's not that long, it's not that many words, but it says a lot about what they're going to do. Okay, and now, and each of these, there's also, you know, work plans that go with all of these, if you, you know, you go to their websites. Go to the next one. Vancouver, this is climate change, and generally accelerate action on climate change. And here's where they describe the situation. Vancouver's building on a strong foundation of environmental action from the Greenest City Action Plan, and did that, and so this is their, theirs goes on to say all kinds of things, they're pretty long. So that, that just gives you some examples of where you're going to go. Now, these, you know, very well-written things are not achieved in a four-hour meeting, and so we're not going to be doing that tonight. But it's kind of where you're headed, I'm hoping that you're headed towards, is to get to some kind of statements that captures what's important to each of you, but, and that means something to you and the community. So, so now are you ready to get to work? So, so now, are you ready to get to work? Yeah, I'm done listening, I'm done talking. Really. Just setting the context. So, you had council homework to do. And you were, you brought, hopefully you all brought it with you. Did you bring your homework with you?
I sure did.
I'm looking, I haven't had a chance to talk to you yet. Ken, which homework?
Yeah, which one, my goal?
Yes. You brought them, okay. Boy, for a minute, you scared me for a minute there. Okay. And so, we're going to go through a process of identifying goals. And we, the process is that everybody here has 10 sticky notes. Because remember I told you to bring five to 10 goals? So you may not need to use all 10. And I'll tell you a little bit of what I want you to write on these. If you, if you really, really, really need more than 10, you can ask me for more. But, you know, so just to know, it's not like I'm out of sticky notes. I'm just trying to keep it focused on high-level, high-level things. And so, let's see here, where's my? So I want you to write, take your, just do your own work and you're going to take your sticky notes. And you're going to write just a few words. I gave you small sticky notes for a reason. So, it's not, it doesn't have to be sentences or anything. What I want you to do is to write in just a few words, your goals. Each goal? One per note. And so, I'm going to give you some time to do that. Try to, you know, make it legible enough for people to read it. But, you know, like I said, they're little sticky notes for a problem, for a reason. So write down your goal areas. And eventually, these aren't going to be statements, goal statements, like I just showed you. These are just ideas, these are the germs of ideas that you're going to start. So I'm going to give you a few minutes to write them down. And then, we'll start a sharing process.
You don't want us to try to write goals?
Nope, nope, you don't, yeah, you wouldn't do that with, like, that, it's just painful to do it. Writing statements, I've done it, I've tried it, it doesn't work. You have to get there a little at a time, yeah, kind of ease into it. And Mike, Mike is going to be channeling, pushing.
No, it's, Mike, sorry, I know he's talking to somebody. And I'd shared my homework with him before, but I just wanted to quickly ask Mike if he'd like me to jot down some words for the sticky notes, Mike?
This is Mike.
Yeah, I can hear you now, hi.
Hello, I think I can turn your goal statements into just a few succinct words.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So if you want to, I'm going to ask you to give them to me in your priority order. I want you to prioritize them for yourself, you know, first, second, third. So, if you could let Mike know, did you send them in in priority order?
No.
Okay.
But I will, I can work on that as, yeah, in the meantime, thank you.
And then if you write something you don't like and you really do need another sticky note just to correct it, please let me know. Do you have your Sharpie? Okay, okay. Succinct. Somebody used that word on my phone calls, succinct, be succinct. Oh, you have it, okay. So now, if you brought on your homework, you brought down these sort of big ideas. And you also had a lot of more description. We will be using that, that will all get incorporated. But this is just the start. So keep it handy. So I'll just look and see when people are done, take your time. Just a few words. You look like you're done, like, you were done a long time ago, right? Yeah. Okay. Don't agonize over these too much because there's, that's going to be worked on a lot. You don't have to get them quite right. These are just test stickies to see if they stuck. Maybe the answer is yes, they did. You're still working, you're done. Rochene, you're done?
Yeah.
Okay. Amy, are you still working? You're done, okay, good. You done? Ken? You are? Okay, good. It's okay, Karen and, I think, your last one, okay. And you don't have to have 10, I'm just saying, you know? 10 was just the maximum, 5 was the minimum. Okay. So, what I want you to do now is to take your sticky notes and put them in priority order, which you think is the most important to you, the second most important, and all the way down, they're all important. They're not going to go anywhere if it's not the first important thing, that's okay. So just put them in an order that is, reflects the importance of that goal to you. You ready? We're still working on, see, you didn't have to write it down, but you got this part, like, you had it, they were already prioritized. This was the person who did her homework thoroughly.
Well, we all did our homework.
Yes, you did.
Some of those were different.
Yeah, yes. I would never do anything quite that thorough, but I'd get my points across.
I didn't number my pages, so when I dropped them, now they're out of order. There's notes to sell. Always put page numbers.
Okay, race to the finish, I know this is hard. Everything's important. Well, that's, that's part of the process because that's going to be true for just about everybody. There's going to be commonalities and there's going to be overlap. And so, we're going to try to organize them into something that is workable. Ready? Okay, so now, I'm going to go around in no particular order at first, for the first round. And I'm going to ask you to give me one sticky note, and I'm already over here. So I'm going to go over here and ask you for your first priority sticky note. What does it say?
Climate.
Climate, climate action, okay, so I'm just going to put these up here. Okay, that is succinct. What's your, what's your priority?
New revenue sources.
New revenue sources, okay.
Do you want us to write your numbers off?
Nope, don't need to, nope. Safety, okay. New revenue sources, safety. So safety, that's a big word. We're going to talk more about what that means to you. Kaylee, what you got? Words to my heart, oh.
Transportation master.
Okay, and I'll come back around to you.
Increase trust and transparency between the city, council, and community.
Okay. Well, we have a good variety here. They're all different. That's okay. Okay, so now, if you have ever participated in or watched the NFL draft or the, you know, fantasy football draft, I'm going to start with the last person and let you go first and then reverse the order.
I think mine's sticky note is missing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That means you get to go first, next.
Yes, so councilmember in Deportes first was, "Protect urban tree canopy, support parks and recreation, and promote natural resource stewardship."
Okay.
A little more than a few words.
Yeah. Protect, there's a lot there, there's a lot there. And since she gets to do the next one, what's the next highest priority?
Next highest priority is engage community in decision-making process.
Okay. All right. Thank you for not letting me forget, when she's not in the room, it's just... I do it all the time. Okay, so I'll put this here, this up here, okay. Pam? Is it okay if I call you by your first name? Because I've already done that, I should have asked you.
Accelerate environmental sustainability and actions to combat climate change to meet state and county goals ahead of mandated deadlines.
Ah, okay. All right, now I want to come around this side, so I don't have to go on the mat, okay. Rochene?
So maybe mine's not 50,000 feet high, but mine's stormwater and address critical areas and drainage issues.
Okay, all right, stormwater and drainage, okay.
Community preparedness.
Community preparedness. Alrighty. It's a good one. Let's see here. Alrighty.
Protection of the environment.
Protection of the environment, okay.
And mine is clear communications.
Okay, I'll be right back.
So an improved communications plan to engage residents.
Okay. All right. You know, that, no, it should be the same ones. That's part of, that's part of the point is that on your own, you came up with these things and there's probably more alignment, that helps you see what your collective priorities are. All right. Okay. So then, I'm going to go back to Amy.
Include housing types sustainability.
Okay, housing types sustainability.
Safe to school.
Safe to school, so getting to school safely.
Right. Like walk routes, bike routes. And there's an interesting traffic tool I saw.
Excuse me, can we make sure your microphones are on when you're speaking? Because otherwise, nobody will hear what you're saying.
Yeah, so what were you going to say?
There's an interesting traffic tool to look at reducing speed limits.
Ah, in school zones?
Citywide.
Citywide, okay, all right.
Financial sustainability.
Nice.
Transit center.
Transit and transit center. You want a transit center?
I do.
Okay, got it. All right, financial sustainability. All right, going over here.
Climate action plan. From our youth board.
Increase diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in our community and incorporate social justice in all policies, land use, and housing.
Okay, I'll be right there, Mike. Okay, climate action plan. D E I B. And what do you got, Mike?
It's kind of a two-parter, so improve quality of life for all residents and also understand needs and wants of the community.
Okay.
Should we do number four while you're over here?
Sure, so this is more like kind of world peace?
Basically, yeah.
That's good.
That's a good summary.
That's aspirational.
Number four here is promote inclusion and equity.
Okay.
Marilyn, is this how you get your daily steps in?
I know, I was just thinking about that. Fortunately, I charged my Fitbit. So I'm getting my steps, yes, it is. I almost always get my 10,000 steps when I'm working. Okay, so going back this way.
Improve efficiency and financial sustainability of all government operations.
Okay.
What are our housing needs and wants over time for 100% over AMI?
Okay. And then I guess I'm going to Kaylee?
Yep, low-income housing.
Okay.
Long-term plan for the build-out of the city.
Okay.
Climate action plan.
Okay.
Diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging.
Okay. All right, now I'm really going to change things up here. I'm going to go to the middle of the table, okay, Kaylee, go.
Urban forester and natural areas crew. And that is my final.
Okay. Is that your final answer?
It is.
Address climate change.
Okay.
I'm going to put climate and D E I B, but everyone else does.
Karen?
Affordable housing options. Economic development for financial sustainability.
Okay. All right. Going to Rochene.
Urban forest management plan to implement it.
Okay.
Improve sustainability, performance, and efficiency for all forms of mobility and transportation. And that is my final.
That's your last one, okay. So, what do you, do you, through Mike?
Yes, number five here is efficient and effective city government with high-performing employees.
Okay. That's good. I know this seems kind of repetitive, but are you noticing anything? Okay. So far, so good. It's kind of hard to miss. Okay, coming back to Amy.
Efficient government operations.
Okay.
D E I B.
Okay.
D E I B.
Okay. All right.
D E I B.
D E I B, okay.
Update town center plan.
Ah, okay. You're done?
I did.
Yes. All right, do you have any more? Yep, you do, one more, okay. No, you had it.
Number six here is maintain high level of public safety with public engagement. And then number seven, should I go on?
Why not?
Okay. Promote understanding of city government through education and public participation.
Okay. Okay. So now who still has stickies? Okay.
This is my last one, which is transportation, performance, efficiency, and sustainability.
Okay.
This is review and potentially add new commissions, review our commission structure and see if it's efficient, see if we can improve it.
Okay, so in the name of sort of public community involvement?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll be right back in.
Emerald Necklace.
And everybody knows what that is, right? I had to have her explain it to me because I didn't know. Does Rituja have any more? Okay, got mine.
So preservation of wildlife and then the last one, protection of lakes and streams.
Okay.
Clean water.
Mine is around emergency management. I want a huge generator.
Where, at your house?
Huge, freaking generators so that if we have an emergency, that residents that are on oxygen or dialysis are actually able to come someplace and not, you know, die, so.
Okay. And does that...
They're very expensive.
Yeah, they're the huge ones especially.
I'm talking the huge ones.
Yeah.
Okay, and Urban Forestry Plan.
Okay, so let's see, I put these in the order I got them. All right, here they are. Am I missing any sticky notes? Did I get them all? Okay. Good work. There's a lot of good stuff there. And so what we're going to do now is do some sorting. And I'm going to, first of all, I'm going to have you take a look at, because these came in priority areas and priority order, did you see anything that kind of rose to the top for a lot of people? What did you see, Pam?
Climate action. Budget also.
I saw climate as well, and then I saw a lot of, well, there's so many other subjects in there that are related to climate, you know, like protecting our waters and streams and that kind of thing.
Climate and environment.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's some umbrella areas, for sure, that would be the focus for your goal statement. So, one of the other things, so I mean, I saw that too, I saw a lot of housing or a lot of climate action, a lot of environment, transportation. And so, safety, financial sustainability, I saw that come up in a lot of different ways.
Trust and transparency.
Housing came up several times.
Trust and transparency.
And housing is there too, in different versions.
Okay, okay. So now here's where it gets, I'm going to ask each of, maybe two of you to volunteer, to come up here and help start sorting these and getting them in categories. And I'll tell you that some of these things are goals. Clearly, they are things you're trying to attain. Some of them are tasks, like a climate action plan is a work plan task. So I'd like you to sort them out first, you know, get the, you know, tasks with, you know, from the goals. And then I want you to put the sticky notes together that form a larger goal area, like environment. Environment, environment, call it whatever you want to. Try to capture, try to get something that captures what is on the sticky notes as well as you can, but just in a few words, okay? And then if there's any outliers and if you're not sure where it goes, then you can, we'll get back to the full council and talk a little bit more about it. So, I need two willing volunteers.
I think Kent and I should do it.
You think Kent?
I do, yeah.
Oh, well, he didn't get the whole ground rule thing. I mean, I didn't even have a chance. That's fine. Basically, it's be nice. It was pretty much be nice. Okay, well, that's fine. Okay, so why don't you come up here and I'll show you sort of physically what I want you to do. And you all can watch and make notes about what they're doing. Okay, so this is sort of your canvas.
This is going to make some great TV watching.
And what you want to do is find, you know, find the ones that are clearly...
Goals.
Goals. Or, no, clearly of the subject matter, like environment. And then, then below that then, and then what I'm going to have you do is to write like the big word, environmental sustainability or whatever it is. Put those, put those stickies under that. And then at the top, do the goal-type things and the task-type things below them. So the tasks are separated from the aspirations. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So group them together by subject matter and then divide out the goals from the tasks in each area.
So just talk to each other and say, well, let's start here.
You want to start, since the first one here is climate?
Hi. I, oh, I didn't even recognize you.
Carrie Sam.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, oh, yeah. But, yeah, you're usually in like a attorney suit or something, you know. Go back.
I was going to take notes, I don't know if that matters.
Yeah, so, so tell, tell your colleagues about how that was for you, what you noticed, and what you figured out.
Well, we figured out we're closely aligned on a lot of stuff. And then we have, I think we got pretty close to the categories of where our goals should be. And that would be the environment, housing, finance, the operation of the government, diversity, equity, inclusion, safety, transportation, and that, then that kind of...
Trust and transparency.
Yeah, then the community with the trust and transparency, which kind of falls into the government. But there's, thanks, there's a couple things then that came down on the bottom that can fit in several places or could also be mainly just a task.
So tell us, tell us more about the little outliers there.
So, so a couple of things though up here too is that some of these are tightly related, right? So some, like, it was clear that there were separate categories, but like, we purposely put government efficiency next to finance because they're probably really closely related. Same with like housing and D E I B, maybe not completely separate. I mean, they are separate tasks, but maybe not in terms of things. What do we have? We had revise the, and update the town center plan, long-term plan for the build-out of the city. Those seemed very closely related to each other and could probably go in, again, multiple places, right? They could go into housing, they can go into the environment, they can go into transportation. Review the commissions, right? That could possibly go into some of our trust and transparency things. Right, or government, right? Maintain and improve the quality of life of our residents and understands the needs and the wants of the community. Again, that felt like it should go in all of them, right?
Right.
And then promote an understanding of city government through education and public participation. That could go in trust and transparency. But again, it kind of felt like it belonged in a lot of places or everywhere.
Or its own group.
Right. So.
Excellent work. Yeah, thank you. Good job.
Nice job, you two.
So I will say that what some cities, if you look at their goal statements, their vision and all, they have goals, which are more program-oriented, and then they have values, shared values. This is how we do things. And so we involve the community in decision-making. We respect and honor diversity and inclusion, and we make this, you know, those are kind of values that you hold. There are tasks associated with it. So sometimes the overarching things tend to be values, you know, they tend to be things that you all, you really apply to everything. So, colleagues, anything you've noticed here?
Hi, I'm Kathy Hallam, we host it's R and H.
Ah, okay. Okay, well, that's good.
Looks great.
Because we're going to take a break. And during the break, get, you know, get some water, get whatever you need, and then get some pizza if you want. And then for those of you who are not at the board, go, take a look at what's up there and see how they group things together. And make a note to yourself about anything you want to know more about and just, you know, to how, how did they get to that, to that place? Or any suggestions you have, all right?
Great, thank you.
Rituja, sorry about the pizza.
It's breakfast time here, so I didn't invite you guys to breakfast here, so. Right, what time are we reconvening back, like in 10 minutes or 15 minutes?
Yeah, about 10 minutes, 10:15? This is your break.
Sorry, this is our mid-session break.
Yes, it's your mid-session break.
Maybe let's take 15 and come back.
And then you'll have time to get some food.
At 7, does that work for everybody?
Perfect.
And so in the meantime...
Pizza won't be here for probably 15, 20 minutes. Is there something else we could do?
Yeah.
In the meantime, maybe I had a question, quick question. Since you mentioned values, Marilyn, I was wondering, how does that sort of play out in the terms of goal setting? Do you, like I saw what Kirkland was doing, right? Like I think it was almost two-part, one was goal and one was their sort of vision, which had that, that kind of values embedded in it. So when we actually come up with a document, where does the values part fit in?
So, again, there's kind of the what you do and there's how you do it. And the values describe how you go about doing things. What is important to you and how you, in your process... What is important to you in how you, in your processes, and how you treat people, and how you treat each other, things that are important to you. So DEIB is a good, could be a value that you all share and hold. But there's also some to-dos related to that. And so there, you know, there also could be a goal statement about, you know, things that you're gonna do about that. So that's kind of how those relate.
Because we've got a, like, a three-way tie.
Okay.
And a couple of them.
Okay.
Environment has, like, all the actions under it, too.
So these, these are the activi, these are the, yeah.
Post-its.
Yeah, okay.
Environment is definitely the top.
Okay.
And then finance, A, D, E, I, B is like one. And then housing, transportation, trust and transparency is like all in third place. And then government is last.
Okay.
You're going by-
You're going by the number of post-its.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and that, so, and originally, if you had looked at them before they'd combined them, they were kind of up there in priority area. And I'd say that what you're noticing about environment is that that was high, high priority for a lot of people. So those things were pretty, pretty consistent.
And I can make a really strong case that government and finance are one in the same. Because the government ones are about efficiency of operations, which is not the same as financial sustainability, but some of the finance ones included both. So like, we'll have to, as we dive into that, decide, is that one big category? Or do we parse that out into two very distinct categories, right?
Yeah, because you had a couple of them, too, where they have actually two topics on one.
Yep.
You know, when you have transportation and inefficiencies and sustainability, that's kind of almost three items.
Right.
So then how do you bridge that? So we put it into transportation, but it's, but it is, there's, like, you don't have transportation sustainability. I guess, maybe we could, but normally, normally, I guess if you put it into social, like how, like how we're gonna do it as social, it's not, I guess it's part of economics.
And climate change.
But, but that's kind of-
As we dive into a little more, you're right. This will come, and, and you can go back to, if you find a sticky and you're talking about it, you're going, so who's, who's is this? And what, say more about what you were, what you were wanting to express there. And it's okay, it's almost like we could, if we need to, like, Rick's, take some stickies, rip them apart and put them in two different categories. That's okay, there's nothing that structured about it. This is just a way to start you to get organized about a conversation about it. So looking at the, so revise, update town center plans. I heard town center a number of times when I was talking on the phone with you, so I'm surprised I only had one sticky. But is that, I mean, that's almost like a land use planning growth.
Well, it's, it's a finance, it's a housing, it's a transportation, it's economic development.
Yes, it's environmental.
Yep.
I mean, because it, because it's a huge plan, right? It's a sub-area plan, so it kind of-
And this is a to-do, this is a task.
Right. Yeah.
Right?
So it could be a task.
So that might be a way to define it, is put it under-
To put it, or, yeah.
Yeah, put it in a task pile or column or category.
And then same thing for, oh, see, there they go. Just don't always-
They don't stick multiple times as well.
It's okay, we're gonna move them around again. So the long-term plan for build-out of the city, I mean, don't these, these two do kind of go together?
Yes.
And again, they go-
Housing, government, environmental.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah.
The list goes on.
Yeah, yeah.
To-dos.
And they're, yeah, they're to-dos.
They're like actions, yeah, right.
Kind of, your comp plan process is going to address this, I think. And that's your opportunity to talk about that with your community, with each other, because that could be very inclusive. So did you decide that new commissions, I mean, I think-
That could be in government.
Or transparency or government?
That's why.
It's community, it's also-
Whose was that? Okay, what did you, what did, where do you want it to be? I think, I think it could go into government, I think.
What kind of commission do you want to have?
A finance and administration commission. Oh, there you go. You could have, and, you know, when you, when you talk about boards and commissions, and we'll talk about community involvement in a little bit, you know, about where, how that comes in, Retusha?
Yeah, I was also wondering, I know since boards and commission were specifically mentioned, Karen, were you also thinking about committees? Because I think that is something that we had talked about, is how do we tap into the brainpower that exists in our community and bring them on as advisors or just, you know, to brainstorm ideas?
And it ties actually back into community engagement, because the more that we're able to build a participatory process where residents are actually engaged and involved with different aspects of the city, not just, you know, over time, that it just, it's a, it's a virtuous cycle.
And it's something the city has done before. I mean, they, they did it when they were putting the town center plan together. There was all kinds of committees put together for that. So it's, this is nothing new. I think just over the years, maybe we haven't delved back into it and reused it, so, yeah.
And you have, you know, there's ad hoc committees, things that are time-limited and, and, you know-
Well, I was gonna say, like, the human resources, that started out as kind of more of a committee, if you will, a time-bound committee. And then only when they got to the end, as part of the recommendation, did it become a long-term commission. So that's also stuff we can do, right? Is create a very targeted, go figure, go get information and come up with recommendations and then see where that leads.
Yeah, yeah. So I will tell you, my experience is that commissions, the boards and commissions are easier to create than to delete.
Disband.
Because, you know, people get invested in them and then they feel like they're losing a part of their voice, you know? And so, but sometimes they've run their course. And so being aware of, you know, what kind of committees or commissions are, should be time-limited based on the nature of what they're talking about, I think is a really good thing to think about in that effort. Oh, this is the World Peace One. Well, this is, this is, this is your vision statement. There's like a-
Can you read it for us?
Yeah, it says, maintain, improve the quality of life for all residents, understand needs and wants of a community. We're gonna have a government that meets the needs and wants of the community and that maintains or improves quality, quality of life. I mean, those are, those are really big elements. And so there's a place for that.
If we could add the phrase that Kirkland had on the end of that, which is without impacting future generations.
Generations, right.
I think that's a really key element.
Yeah, I think, it's almost like without, yeah, you want to do things without impacting, but you also want to protect future generations.
That's what I mean, without negatively impacting them, right? So you can do these things as long as we do them in a sustainable way and don't eliminate their ability to, you know, survive.
And you're actually doing them for somebody else that comes behind you.
Yes, on behalf of them.
I think that's the idea. Promote understanding of city government through education and public participation. I think that is a project, I think that's a to-do under government.
Yeah, sure.
Because I will say that a lot of people don't know that much about how the government actually works until they are run smack up against something that affects them.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, they're very interested. And so, but giving everybody sort of a common understanding of how the city works, everything that you have to do, it can seem overwhelming, but it's a really, it's a really good-
It could also be a project under trust and transparency, right? Because how do you build trust is by improving people's understanding.
Yes, yeah.
So I could see it there, too.
Yeah, I could see, so that, that one slide I was talking, I do have a slide at the end that I think, I wasn't sure if I was gonna use it or not, but it's about community involvement. And it's a model, it's called the IAP2 Spectrum of Community Engagement. And it says you, based on the decision to be made or the problem to be solved, you're going to involve people at different levels. At the end of the day, often, is that mine? I'm sorry. Who the heck would be, it's my dog, probably. And that you involve people differently, if, ultimately, the council is gonna make a lot of the decisions. Sometimes it's a joint decision made between the city council and maybe the county or a neighboring city or something like that. And so, you know, taking a look at what's the decision to be made? Who is the decision-maker? Who are the stake, who's gonna care? And I'll run through that model a little bit later. And then that's how you start your community engagement, is asking yourself those questions. And then that tells you, you know, because you want it to be meaningful, because it takes, it takes work. It takes a lot of effort to do really good community involvement, really it is. Okay, so I see a cart, but-
That's garbage.
Those are, this is a bev cart?
Yes, just water, just to be clear, it's just water.
Ginger ale, water. Okay, I think we can go ahead, why don't we just start our break? Because we're, we're good on time right now. And the next thing is gonna require some energy. So come up and take a look at these things and notice anything that you think you could do to improve this, this little collection of things.
Be back at 7:15, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, why don't we aim for 7:15 council? And that way, there's time to-
We've got time.
Use the restroom and take a quick break.
I was thinking, too, that the difference between these sets of goals and the difference in the desert of the resources that we, must be dramatically different.
Or cities that have a lot more resources than you do, you know, it goes both ways. And so you scale it to your, it's gotta be unique to your community, to the resources you have available, to people's willingness to invest in the community. And, you know, that's how you, you have to scale, it has to be scalable. And you have to, which is why World Peace is maybe too big. But, you know, community understanding and, you know, wants and needs is important, so.
Streaming, because if we're not streaming, we should probably stop talking.
Right, I think I'm, I'm still, I'm still on, because I got a question. Yeah, does that, does that answer your question? Okay, so now we can go on a break.
Yeah, I think we're good. All right. There she is, all right. All right, welcome back, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
It's just the button. Okay. So those of you who went up and looked at the sticky notes during the break, any comments, anything you noticed?
I think we can definitely combine, pare down even further.
Okay, okay, yeah.
We discussed DEIB being maybe even a value running throughout, not necessarily, you know? Because I know that program is starting, so.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's starting, but, you know, I think it may be starting really small and just internal to staff. And I think we all have a much broader vision that it permeates literally everything, much faster. So that's what I'm kind of thinking. And I'm assuming everybody's, unless you check in, I can't tell if everybody's thinking the same way I am on that.
That's why we're talking tonight.
I'd like to keep it its own bucket for now.
You know, and I will say that this is a pretty common area that has emerged over the last five years or so, really, as a more, something that's very focused. And of many cities, and I don't, are you, do you have, or, so the do, the what on this? The activity is, do, and do you have a DEIB plan?
Just starting.
Just started.
And again, it's very small right now, it's not as comprehensive as Karen was saying.
Okay, so something that you'll build on, but once you get the results of that, then you're gonna have all kinds of activities coming out of that and things that, policies that you need to update, procedures that you need to update, communication, community outreach techniques that you use. You know, you're gonna be working on all of those things. But again, the thing is that there's a lot of, there's other cities that are farther ahead of you and you can build on their work. All right.
There was another area, right? Yeah, we also discussed moving trust and transparency as one category and including government within trust and transparency.
So, and, and trust and transparency is another one of those things that is a value, right? So you might think of it that way.
Although I think, like, DEIB, we have some work to do. So we think it should be a goal as well. And I think we talked about, like, the government, because most of the government stuff is government efficiency. And so that's gonna kind of fall into trust and transparency and our financial sustainability, right? So it doesn't necessarily have to be a goal unto itself. And then like your commission parts felt very much like trust and transparency, because that's all part of a communications and community engagement plan that probably needs to come under trust and transparency, so that's kind of where.
That makes sense, okay, so now-
I have a clarifying question, yes. I think, you know, at the beginning, Marilyn, you had mentioned that, you know, one of the reasons why we're doing this goal is also it informs our budgeting process, because that will be another big part of what we do. And I'm just curious on how, when we come up with these goals, and especially when we want to keep them separate, for example, what is the relationship between these goals and ultimately, sort of like a budget line item, right? Like, I'm just trying to understand. Because, for example, if we say we want to leave the DEIB as a separate goal in itself, then is the expectation that we will potentially be funding it as well? And if we put it as a value, then, you know, sort of the funding is, can be kind of streamlined through the other buckets that we have within, like, transportation, for example. I think you got my point.
Yeah, no, no, you're right. It is, it is a value, but it also is things that you have to do. And in the budget, through the budget process, you are giving information to the staff and the city manager about what is important and what you want to see in the budget. And a lot of those things, those, you know, I'll put my finance hat on for just a minute because I, it's just in me. So you have one-time expenditures and you have ongoing expenditures. And you need to use ongoing revenues to support ongoing expenditures. That's, that's sustainable finance. But you also have investments that you can make, projects and studies. Like, a climate action plan is one that is a study in and of itself. It is a task. But there's a long tail to it, because then you have to go back, just like DEIB, and you have to go back and look at how you do everything and how you're gonna implement that. So, you know, it's at a couple of different levels here. So what I wanted to do was to start talking a little bit about what some of these things mean to you. And as we walk through this, that I think this will evolve, okay, the pizza. So-
Oh, sorry, I have a question.
Yeah.
Does it make sense to keep the, given what Retusha just said, does it make sense to keep the buckets as they are right now?
Maybe not.
In the work plan? Because then could those things fall under the existing categories of the work plan?
That are in the work plan? Well, do they match up?
Many do.
Okay. Yeah.
I feel like one of the challenges, right? Like, most of these goals that we have are not necessarily wholly achievable in two years.
Right.
And so I love that we have these buckets, and that's great. But when it gets to the budget, which is a two-year cycle, and the work plan, which is generally a one-year cycle, then that's where I think we need to get to, what are the key results that we want to see over the next two years? Because without those, it's really hard to prioritize these in a meaningful way in terms of budgeting. Like, we gotta get a little bit more, like, let's take DEIB, for example, right? What are, DEIB, we can have a very big lofty goal statement, and I think we can all come to an agreement on it. But what do we want to achieve in the next two years for DEIB? What are those key results, the outcomes that we want to see? And then that's where staff will go back and say, if we want to achieve, you know, I'll make up a goal of, you know, we want to see a 30% increase in, you know, minority representation or something like that, right? What are their work plan items that they would have to do to make that happen? And then they can put a price tag on that for us. But without that next level of those key results that are- But without that next level of those key results that are short and long term, the budgeting cycle becomes very nebulous. Because we're not going to achieve, you know, net zero greenhouse gas emissions in the next two years.
No, and that's, you're not going to, goals aren't achieved over, they, and they actually shouldn't change too much. They should, over time, you're going to refine them and then they're going to, some years ago, you wouldn't have a DEIB goal, but you do now. And so as, as the world changes, as your community changes, you revisit your goals and you, you know, you know, you plan the work based on what the world is doing and what your community is doing. And so, yes, you're right, you will, you know, the budget process, what, because, again, think of the strategic planning cycle, what a neat process that was and the fact that you're mostly done with your two-year budget now. And so Scott's challenge is going to be to take what he hears a little bit from this because generally speaking, it's be able to tie the budget and say, here's how the budget, here's, here's your goals and here's how this budget addresses it.
Well, can we do like another yellow sticky exercise with key results and say, everybody come up with your top five key results in the next two years?
We're going to do that next. Kent, did you have something to say? Did I, you didn't? Okay.
Marilyn, if I may, just for a quick moment, the delivery driver just pulled up. And so as we work through these and we're, I would encourage all of you to get up as you feel appropriate and grab some and bring it back to your seat.
Sorry, I was just looking at the buckets on the work plan and these I think would all fit in them, so, but obviously we're going to do what you said next. Is that what you said, like splitting out the?
Right, we'll try to identify the buckets. And as we go through that process, they made, the buckets may shift a little bit. And that's okay. It's, it's an iterative process. You know, you're trying to build something that is an important statement for your community and to think you're going to do it all in one night is, you're just not. I mean, as much as I'd like everything to get done as fast as it can, it just, it just doesn't work that way. Because some people need time to think about it, too. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take each of these big buckets and I'm going to have you, I'm going to put the stickies up on with that page and I'm going to ask you to describe to me things that are important for that goal. What do you see? What does it look like when you're achieving that goal? And so some of them are projects, some of them are to-dos, and some of them are aspirations. I want to stick with the aspirations at this point. And I'm not going to start with environment because it's too big. So I'm going to start with something a little more digestible. So, and maybe that's, go ahead, DEIB. Can we start with that? Is that all right? They're eating pizza. Yeah, and you, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Whoa, okay, so now I'm breaking the equipment. It is. Okay. Okay, so these do stick to the paper a little bit better.
So DEIB is currently on the work plan. It's under high performing and secure government.
It is what?
It's under high performing and secure government.
Okay.
So we would just be coming up with the tasks that we would want under DEIB?
And I think that's a question for you, for you all, is it big enough to be its own goal area? Or is it really just a subset, it's been a subset, or has it gotten big enough and urgent enough, important enough that it needs to have its own focus?
And I feel strongly that we, as council, now Scott, you should weigh in on this, that we as council should not be defining work plan items or tasks. We should be defining goals and outcomes. And then that's kind of staff job is to come back and say, here's what we would have to do to be able to achieve those. Here would be the, the work plan items, right? Right, like we shouldn't be coming up with tasks that were work plans, right?
Right.
You know.
Well, if we define the outcomes, right, like we want a climate action plan by 2020, you know, the end of 2023, that's not a task, that's an outcome or a key result that we want to see. And then they can go figure out the tasks involved in doing that, right?
Yes, you're right, that there is the work plan items, those are the to-do, that's the to-do, the to-do list for your staff. And some of them are for you to do. But, so some of them are tasks, but I think that they tend to blend, bleed together a little bit at some point. So you're going to say things that these are things I want to do. And, you know, Scott's just taking this all in. He's thinking, he's already making notes about how he's going to, how he has already included money in the budget for this, or he hasn't and he's going to, so.
I'm looking at your flight plan, though.
Yeah.
Like, if we go below 30,000 feet, that's where we start to get out of our airspace. And tasks were definitely below 30,000 feet.
So, so I appreciate that, council member, and I want to respond to council member Lam really quickly, or to Amy, and say that the designations within the work plan were just, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but those were the staff version of grouping things together and giving it some version of a title. So that is not, council member Stuart, or Pam, to your point, DEIB was a work plan item that was fairly nebulous because we were just sort of saying, okay, we'll try to come back to you with something. And so that's what we, we are, you know, that's what we came back to you with the resolution saying, here's how we think we should start. But that is different than having a, for instance, a goal to say, we want to do something or, you know, we want to solve this issue. And then within that would be some of the things that we're already doing might be some of those, to Marilyn's point, some of those to-do list items. So just to break those two up a little bit, I think they are somewhat different.
So, and I'll try to, I'll try to help you sort that out. And that's, that's what I want to do. And so remember, if you think about the why and the what, the why is the goal. Why are you doing this? So the what is, we're doing a DEIB plan. Why? Why are you doing that? And so we're going to talk about the why, all right? So for DEIB, there we go. So what is important there? So I've got, this is a promote inclusion and equity, okay? That's a big, that's a big statement. So I want to, to tell me, you to tell me, what's important to you about DEIB? Yes, Karen?
So that we as a council and as a city look through, at every decision through an equity lens.
Okay.
And that's every decision with an equity lens.
Okay. Okay. What else does it look like? Anybody else? If you're doing this, if you're doing a good job at this, what does it look like to you?
That our, our councils, our boards, commissions and staff are representative of our community in all the ways that representative, representative can mean, right? It's not just any one category of that, it's all the different things. It's ages and economic situations and stages of life and it could be race, it can be all sorts of, you know, gender diversity, whatever.
Demographics.
Yep, all of the different demographics.
Staff, commissions.
But we want the, we want our community to be represented, right?
Okay, so we, so one of the things, we have diverse representation on, in staff and committees and council and anything else? Contracts, okay. Okay, what else does it look, who else? Give me another lens on this. What else is important to you?
I think for me, it's celebrating the diversity that's in the community in different ways and, and making sure that everybody feels like they belong to the city and that they're not otherized. And I think for me particularly, it's also, you know, especially folks who are not born in, in the United States of America. And I think we have around, what, 33% of our population right now? I think many are under the impression that they cannot get involved in our government because they're not citizens. But, so for me, it's really important that everybody, whoever resides in the city of San Amish, feels like, you know, they belong to the city, that they're vested in the city. And so for me, it also looks like participation in community outreach programs and making sure that their voices are heard.
So then to, so let me just, so high level of engagement of diverse populations? Is that, is that reflected? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Retujia, is it too narrowing if we were to say, celebrate cultural diversity? That's what I heard you say, but if that's too narrowing, we could leave the word cultural out. But I think what you were talking about, and I agree with you, is that it's a cultural diversity that we need to celebrate. Is that what you were saying?
I think that's a part of it, yeah. I mean, I think cultural diversity is definitely something that we should highlight and celebrate. I think for me, the other part is really the educational piece as well, right? Because I think people just be, hey, I'm just here to live and not contribute, or I don't know how to contribute or belong to the city. So I think that's the part for me that's really important. And then that's where the education and letting people know that they can actually be part of the city government. For me, that's really creating that sense of belonging because, you know, if you've never given a public comment before, it can be very intimidating. And then how do we invite folks into, into participating? For me, that really creates that sense of belonging.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
So. I think what like, on what Retujia was saying, and also being somebody who's not, was not born in the United States, communicating to the various communities in our, in our city where they are at. So when you come from another country and you're not involved in any kind of civic life whatsoever, you have certain groups or organizations that you belong to and that's where you get your information. And so that as a city that we're thinking about, how do all of our residents find the information about what's going on? It's through their churches, through their community groups, through schools, et cetera, that we're, we make an effort to broadcast whatever's going on with the city and opportunities to be involved in the city through all of those means.
So, and, and that's, that's a technique is to, to bring that together, but I think what you're saying is, I like what you said about meet, meet people where they're at. And part of that is going to physically where they're at, but also just in their head where they're at, what, where are they in the community? Where are they in relation to their life in this country or this state? But I'm, I'm going to ask, I'm going to follow on to Ken's thing about cultural.
I think it has to be broader.
Okay.
I mean, I think cultural diversity is a big one, but there are so many different types of diversity, right? We have our youth, we want them to feel included.
But that's, okay, so in my definition of culture that we teach in multicultural classes at the high schools, that's included, the youth, the age is part of that culture.
Sexual orientation?
Part of cultures.
Well, I, I think, I, I agree with that.
Just a second.
So that, so that's why I'm just saying, I mean, it's religion, it's, I mean, you name it. It's our, it's our dress, it's our food, it's our music choices, okay? And they are as diverse as they've ever been because of the influence of cultures in America. So it, it is a celebration of cultural diversity that, that I think is part, for sure, is part of DEIB. Every training I've ever been on, on this subject, and we just did two days of it, that's what the, that's one of the main things, is that cultural connectivity has to be a part of it because that's how these, that's how they, that's how I identify. That's how you identify. So maybe we change it to, you know, culturally identified diversity, but that's just too complex. So it's, it's just, it is part of, of the larger picture of the culture to whoever you are.
So I've got this up there and I've got a question mark on it because there's a little bit of difference here about how to express that, if that's too limiting or it's broad, it's broad. You know, it's like one of the things that I learned is that, you know, you don't call, you don't call your community citizens because there's a lot of them who are not citizens, but they are part of your community. And so you don't refer to your population as citizens necessarily. It's just one of those things, one of those awareness things that helps people, bring people in. Other thoughts on what it looks like?
So, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
I think, thanks, yeah. I think one more thing to Ken's point that I wanted to mention is, I think, Roshin and I met Mayor Bali from Issaquah a few weeks ago. And I think they had a wonderful group which to put together just like a calendar, you know, of, of different religious celebrations, events. And they, they wanted to make sure that they were up, you know, available to the public so that, for example, that, you know, we didn't have big public meetings or city council meetings on the days that, you know, maybe there were some celebrations or some observations. And, and I think for me, you know, that falls into that cultural piece where it's like, yes, you are being cognizant of the cultural nuances in our community. And then, you know, you take, take an opportunity to celebrate them. So I think, yes, definitely recognizing cultural observations and cultural nuances is very, very important. And then just, but that is one part of it. And I think, Ken, since you mentioned schools, you know, I, I mean, one of the classic holidays, especially for, for many of the Indians who celebrate Hindu traditions, you know, the Vali Falls around the same time as Halloween, which are two completely different sort of cultural celebrations. And, and it, it used to be, you know, people just wouldn't get like, you know, what, what are the differences, right? So, yes, I think celebrating cultural events and making, just making sure that we are aware of them, I think that goes towards the DEIB.
Okay, so I've got, I've got part of a thing here, but I'm, I'm not, I've got a word that I can't think of, so maybe you can help me. Be cognizant of how government activities coincide with cultural events?
Or conflict.
Or conflict? Yes, okay. Align.
So that kind of goes in line with some of the proclamations that we, we do in our meetings to be cognizant of what proclamations we make. I have that, develop standards and requirements for all proclamations and resolutions for the city to make sure that they are inclusive.
So update proclamation, or, you know, do you have a proclamation policy?
Uh-uh, no.
We don't know.
We don't have a policy.
There's no policy on that.
Okay, so, so you're not going to update, you're going to create a policy?
Develop, yep.
And I'll tell you what, cities get requests from all kinds of organizations to, to do a proclamation and sometimes they're like, you know, to declare Turkey's, you know, whatever on this day or something. And they're, they're kind of, and so they don't always, you know, they don't always do, you can make a decision about who decides what you do, proclamation or what rises to that level. But a proclamation is just a proclamation, it doesn't do anything, so, but it's, it's a recognition of something is what, more of what it is.
I think we have to also ensure we provide access to all necessary services for all of our residents, right? Young and old, regardless of socioeconomic condition, right? And, you know, in, in the spirit of social justice, I think we need to make sure that we are funding regional efforts that our, that our folks draw from, at least, you know, at the median level of all King County cities.
Okay, to ask a clarifying question, are you talking?
Are you talking about, for example, ideally, everybody should, everybody in Sumamish should live within walking distance of a park? That's an equity thing.
It's a transportation thing, too.
It's very tough to do.
Right, it could also be human, or human services, right? It can be, say, not just a park, but does everybody have access to, you know, equal access to transit or transportation, right?
I think that having that as a overarching condition or goal is, you know, that with, our goal is to achieve a point of parity or equity. And I think, you know, for me, I know when we're successful, when other people copy our DEIB policy. Because right now, we're gonna lift and pull, we're gonna take everybody's great work, which is, should shorten the amount of time that we have to do to have to, you know, spend on it.
And that's okay, because...
No, I think, this is perfect. Why wouldn't you do that?
Yeah.
It would be criminal not to.
But I want to make sure, too, that we don't lose sight of, so, yes, parks is part of that, but human services and making sure that we are funding our human services at a, at an equivalent level for everyone, because there are, there are people in the community, there are kids who go to school in our communities who don't feel welcome and included because of their socioeconomic condition.
So human services is not something I saw up there specifically.
But it is part of a DEIB, I think.
It's, it's, well, it's part of a lot of these things, because part of it is meeting the needs of the community, community well-being, safety, you know, health, you know, it's actually in a lot of those things. And so...
Because I think our community isn't just about the people who live here, it's also about the people who work here and go to school here.
Which, and, and it's just, you know, it's a matter of how you have evolved as a community. And all communities evolve differently. And, you know, you have a different demographic than some other cities, which does not make this any different at a high level, okay? All it means is, the way that you, that you implement it is right for your community. And there's gonna be some emphasis that other cities have that you're not gonna have, and vice versa, because this is about you.
But if we want our community to be inclusive, we have to make sure it is accessible to all.
Right. Accessible, accessible is a good, is a good element of that. Okay, I'm gonna move us on. And we can come back. This is not the last time we can write on this piece of paper, although I'm out of space. Put this up here. Okay, so now I'm gonna go to something else. Do you have any preference about where we go next?
Housing.
Housing. Okay, housing. Got it.
We talked about changing this to land use.
Ah, okay. Okay. Which would then pull in town center and build out. So, does that, do you all, do you all think that's okay? I'm not sure. What do you think?
I would just say, are we gonna separate out transportation then? Because when you start talking about land use...
They're, they're closely related.
They're totally tied together. They are two pieces.
Right.
And then, of course, the impact on the environment, anytime that you're gonna take the soil or the trees out to use the land for housing, or for roadways, or some mobility solution, or improvement, or enhancement, then you're talking about the environment. But I like where you're headed, Amy, is it is about land use.
Well, it's your comprehensive plan.
So as long as we just know that we're, we understand that land use also would impact our transportation environment, but I like the idea that if you do the housing, then you could, and land use, you could also say then, what about commercial, what about retail or businesses, or what's being built on it?
And land use, you know, it's one of the chapters in our comprehensive plans, so it's very relatable. And so I think it's worth kind of framing it like that, switching it from housing to land use, because this is a subject that we talk and discuss about all the time, and we will when we do our comprehensive update, comprehensive plan update, too.
We could...
What's a good overarching title?
Well, one thing, to Kent's point, is that land use does, is a thread through all of those. So we could keep the goal focused on housing and make, you know, sure that land use is just addressed in all of those. Because I think land use is gonna come up in financial sustainability, right? If we look at economic development, it's gonna come up in the environment, it's gonna come up in transportation, it may even come up in safety, right? Where are we gonna put that big ol' generator? But, so, so I, you know, I don't disagree with making it housing and land use, although I think Kent raises a good point, that is, land use just inherent in all of these.
Okay, so is there an overarching theme that is community planning? It's something like, I'm trying to think of the good words. Come on, give me some words. It has to do, I don't wanna say comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan happens to include all those things. And so, you know. I don't know.
You know, the way I look at this is that Sumamish is not a planned community, but we are reverse-engineering it to make it a planned community. That's how I look at this, is that we have what we have. We have a lot of single-family homes. We have a deficit of other types of housing options. But when you step back and look at it, like, if you were a consultant, consulting to the company or to the entity, which is the city, you would say, well, this is where you've got some shortages. And so this is, this is how you should plan, or how you could look at planning for this, making it a planned community.
That's interesting observation. Anybody wanna, do you agree with that? Do you disagree with that?
It's clear that we're not a planned community, because that term came up around the dinner table the other night, and I had to explain it to my sixteen-year-old, because they had no idea what a planned community was.
Okay. So what about...
I think from my perspective, I think housing probably should be its own goal, because, again, I think we are lacking of a variety of housing. And I think that kind of is what I was trying to allude to, where I feel like, right now, we know that we have a lot of single-family homes. Many families want to move into our city because of the desirable school districts, the parks, the open spaces. But I think we don't have a good plan for the folks who live in the city. And, you know, for somebody like me, who's gonna become an emptiness, or is almost an emptiness, or somebody who's retired. I think those are sort of the things that we're lacking. And for me personally, what I would like to see is, you know, these are some of the things that we've heard from the community, but is that really the case, right? Like, and I don't know if we need to go in and study to see what are the needs of our community as we reside in the city itself. What are we looking for? And I know we have a housing plan that, you know, that'll be, that we have a grant for, I don't know if that's gonna be part of that. But if we look at housing as a goal, as a council, I would really like us to study and know, what is it that we need in the next twenty years from, from just a housing stock perspective?
Yeah, okay. I agree with Ratuja.
Okay. So, and there's nothing about this, this is all just draft. This is, there's nothing, it's, it's all fungible. But what if you had a heading, a goal about a well-planned community?
Oh, but see, so yes, except, again, that incorporates everything.
We have community livability in our, like, if you look at the work plan, there's still, you know, we have communication engagement, community livability, community safety, cultural recreation, environmental health protection, financial sustainability, high performing and secure government, and transportation, which I feel like is all of those. Like, we already have, so...
Again, Mayor, if I may, I just want to reiterate that those were just staff...
No, but I mean, that's kind of what we have. Like, that was like by accident or not. Those are kind of like, we've almost said what our focus areas are.
What is to keep it from getting too broad? We somehow speak of meeting community housing needs, right? Instead of just calling it housing, we could call it, and again, defining community will be important. Is community just people who live here, or is community everyone who lives, works, or goes to school here?
It might be kind of this one, and I don't know how to say it, but it maintain, improve the quality of life for all residents, understand needs and wants of community, and then plan around that. Is that too broad?
I think that's too broad.
Okay.
Well, it is, but it's a very broad and overarching goal, and we're trying to come up with some buckets. And I don't, again, I don't disagree with necessarily anything on there, but...
So is a livable community, that encompasses a lot of things, and it encompasses housing, land use...
And parks, and transportation, and again, so are we trying to come up with one overarching statement, or are we trying to come up with buckets of goals?
But are we calling this housing? So first of all, we need to know what we're calling it.
That's the question, is, is housing, are we going in a circle? Yeah, okay, so...
So I think we need to define the category, and then we can get there. So I think if we decide we're gonna call it housing...
Let's just call it housing.
Let's just call it housing. And move on, okay? But if at some point you decide, you know, this overlaps too much with this other thing, then somebody's gonna go away and do some brilliant combinations and bring them all together, as if it would just happen that way. Okay, so...
Who is that magical person, Scott?
Mike, he just left the room, he'll be back.
That magical person went home? Okay. Okay, so let's talk about housing. And you have been talking about it. And one of the things is, it says, what are our housing needs, wants over time? And so, so give me some words that describe what it looks like when you have done that.
It looks like senior folks have housing where they don't have to climb stairs and don't have big yards to maintain if they don't want to. People with disabilities have appropriate ADA-compliant homes. Multi-families, multi-generations who live together have homes to live in. There's walkability to parks or to, you know, shopping centers, and there's transit available.
I think it's that, that we understand the needs and wants of our current community over the life, over the span of their lifetime in Sumamish. So, because you start your life out, say, your adult life, where you need X type of housing, but as your life moves through the generation, the decades, you need, you may or may not, but you may need different kind of housing.
Yes.
And that you have options for different types of housing over the span of your life that exist, to one extent or another, within Sumamish. And finding out what that is, and is that what our community want? And what, to what degree do they want or need it?
So, and that's a great question, because, I'm gonna say, options that meet ageability, family, and access to services, just, you know, kind of broadly. But it's a good question about, the council, maybe not everybody in your community is going to agree about the house, about what you do. But you want to have something that, you're the leaders, and you're providing some leadership, and you're saying, we, the elected officials, are, see, think this is really important. And yes, you're gonna need to bring your community along in some way. And some people are gonna be there, but, you know, that's part of the work, is bringing your community along. And because, and staying in a way that doesn't leave anybody out, or doesn't overemphasize one thing over another, because I think you have to, you're gonna evolve over time, yeah.
And you can bring the community along by giving them opportunities to have their say, and giving them opportunities to be heard and share their opinions. And we'll have, you know, and having multiple opportunities to do so. So whether it's people coming to talk at our, you know, designated meetings on our calendars, or going to the community and meeting them where they are.
Okay, and that's trust, is that trust and transparency?
Mm-hmm.
And what you're saying is, you're gonna do that in housing, you're gonna do it in safety, you're gonna do it in government services? It really is an overlay, okay? What else about housing? So you've got...
I think housing should be for multiple generations, right? So we should take a page out of some of the indigenous people whose lands we're on right now, where they look to, I think it's eight generations, right? So how do we meet the needs of, you know, we are the, we are the sandwich generation, right? We have to take care of our parents and our children. So how do we make sure that not only, for me, when I am an empty nester and I'm older, but what about if I'm trying to raise my family here and I need some space for my parents? What about my kids who are about to be adults? Do we want a community where our kids at least have a hope, a thought of being able to live in the community where they grew up? And again, how do we define community? Is community just people who live here, or is community all of the people who make our city work? And if we have environmental and sustainability goals, then we might want to broaden that view of who our community is.
That's what I mean about understanding housing needs and wants over the generations. And, you know, and I think, I think that's, for our current residents, for people who live here now, what are their needs over time?
And where's it going? Oh, you're doing that thing with the nameplate, and I'm missing it, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
I'm not seeing workforce housing up there. And I would really like to see very specific percentages, like, specific units that the city can commit to building for specific AMI percentages. And not just, like, we can, when we do this, we want to build more workforce housing, but we have the opportunity, given our growth target numbers, how many do we want to build? And because, what? Yeah, but those can be targets that we really want to strive for.
So as you're planning your community and, you know, providing opportunities for growth in your community, workforce housing, and that's a hard one, because particularly in a wealthier community, which you are, you can't pass at, is that the people that work at your grocery stores, maybe your teachers, can't afford to live in this community.
And understandably, we don't build this, but we do have an opportunity in the town center to work with the developer and make some specific ass.
And that is land use planning. Yes, you plan, you plan for a variety of different kinds of development that meet a variety of different needs, I think.
There are many policies, I think, that are at play there, not just land use, right? But there can be many policies that we have to enable, encourage, that type of thing. And I think, yeah, I mean, even in safety, right? If we really care about safety, the number of first response, you know, the number of emergency management people that can live here, and even teachers in the school districts, part of their emergency management planning is understanding how many of their teachers actually live in their communities. Because in the event of a disaster, how many teachers are gonna be like, I have to go home, and it's really far, and that means I can't come back and help.
Yeah, and that was an interesting thing during the big snow events, people were sort of stranded and couldn't get to where they needed to be. And there was a lot of cooperation between cities and depart, districts and so forth. So availability of workforce housing, that's another thing. Anything on housing? I've gotta ask a little clarification, because one of them said affordable housing options, and one of them said low-income housing. Okay, here we go. Go.
That's exactly what I wanted to say. So, like, looking at the RCW, you know, because I think a lot of times, everyone's like, no, Sumamish is too rich, or AMI is too high, you can never achieve that. But affordable housing is thirty percent of their income. It's, and then low income is eighty percent of the AMI. So I think just having that distinguished. So, so affordable housing is probably what we would need. I mean, probably, go ahead.
I'm interested in the broader spectrum, too, that would...
I'm interested in the broader spectrum, too, that would actually incorporates low income.
Yeah, so affordable housing is payment of monthly housing costs, including utilities, other than telephone, of no more than 30% of the family's income. And low income is anyone who makes less than 80% of the AMI. But that's for the whole county, for this one, but.
Yeah, because we, right now, we can, we can point to just our habitat for humanity as just one story, and I'd like to add to that. For, that's my thing, is I would like to add to that story, because it enriches the community.
Well, if we want diversity, equity, and inclusion to run throughout belonging, then yes, we need to have some housing so people can be included and belong. Because right now, most people are excluded.
And then how do you get those voices into the conversation? I mean, that's a hard thing, is that the people that you hear from aren't necessarily those people, because they don't necessarily have a voice in government. Anybody's gonna take issue with any of this? Okay, go. It's time.
Sorry, thanks. Yeah, so let's just, let's see where I can start. First, Samamish is a top 10%. So of course, 90% of the people are excluded, just on income alone. Then when we start looking at the average house prices, I think last month it was $2 million from several real estate agents, and now it's a 1.85. So it came down a little bit, but that's because we had a couple outliers that sold above $6 million. So we have those homes, too. So, so when you, so, yeah, darn, should've bought that one at $3 million when I could've.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm a school teacher, and so I don't afford, have the ability to afford to live in Samamish, but I sit on the council, so no, I do, teachers do live in Samamish. Firefighters do, but some of them rent, we get that. So, so what does housing look like? And I think you're headed in the right direction when you're saying, you need to make this pretty broad as far as what is housing, because if I'm not mistaken, council member Karen House stated it pretty clearly, is, we don't build it. Now, can we have some policies and some zoning and some regulations that would start to push in that direction? Yeah, those are all outcomes, or those are all tasks that we would have to take on as a council. And there are some people on the Planning Commission who have made recommendations or have talked about, you know, reducing permitting prices. The cost of building the houses, the cost of the land, makes it so that affordable housing, to some level, doesn't exist. Low-income housing becomes even more difficult, just because, well, what is low-income housing? Well, hi, I live in low-income housing in this city.
Just relatively speaking?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so, so it's not that I don't think we should have the housing, I think we should. It is that I don't think you can throw in that I'm gonna be everything to everyone in the city. So, I know that's a hard statement to hear, but the reality is, is I have the, I am exactly in that boat where I have children who are trying to buy homes, and I have mother-in-laws and the elderly that I'm taking care of, who, and one, they live in Sidro Wili because they can afford to live there, and they live in Issaquah because that's where the housing is. And I live in Samamish, and it's a good thing. And it works for, a lot of people do that. And then there's a ton of people who are leaving the city because they can't afford to live here, or they're taking a look at it and saying, hey, if the city moves in this direction and we don't become financially sustainable, they are leaving because they can't, they're gonna get taxed out of their homes.
Okay, so there was a lot.
There's a ton here.
A lot packed in there, yeah.
Yeah, so housing as a whole, you need to keep this kind of, I like the first part of this, where it's ageability, access to the services. But I'm just gonna say that generational piece for where we sit in the demographics and the topography of the city of Samamish, that's probably not doable.
Okay, so, and remember, these are aspirational. Kayla, you had your hand up first, and then Karen?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I understand, I think when I was probably looking at, of course, we don't build it, but like, housing incentive programs, you know, that's the counties have. That's what I was thinking.
Okay, so that's a, that's a possible program, housing incentive.
I feel like we have to write them down, where we have to put the aspirations in. And to your point, Kent, the only way that we can do the type of housing that I'm suggesting is that we, as a city, have to invest in the land. Now, we can buy the land, instead of converting it into a park, we can make a different decision. We could turn it into another type of housing option for people. So it's, I, the only way I could see doing it and having a pencil out is if the city decides, it puts its willpower behind it and checkbook to actually buy the land, suck the price out, so that we can actually afford to do the type of development that would expand our options for lower-income occupants, right?
So you do have, and there now are more funding sources for affordable housing efforts. You can use a portion, a portion of your real estate excise taxes available for that. And yes, and there's, you know, federal and state money, yes, Amy?
I think this is a good opportunity, since Kent mentioned it, to actually take a look at rezoning some of our areas for, like, mixed use. You know, we can get some housing into those areas, but we can't simply be talking about housing and assuming that these are gonna be built without actually taking a look at areas that we can change to have them rebuilt.
Oh, Retusha, hi. Are you waving at us? I think the point that I wanted to make is that, you know, as council members, our goal is, or, you know, at least, what I feel is, we should be aspirational, we should listen to, you know, what our residents are telling us, and, and take that leap, right? I think having housing for whoever wants to live in the city, I think that's a very reasonable goal to have. And for us to really, again, coming back, and for me, it's really important to really understand that need. And yes, you know, we're not gonna be everything for everyone. And maybe people don't wanna live in Samamish, right? Like, the people who work here, they might not want to, or people might wanna move somewhere else. But I think ensuring that, you know, people who do want to live here have those options to continue. People build communities and families around here, and it's really hard when they're, you know, either tapped out of their homes or just choose not to live here for other reasons, because of, you know, the lack of choice that they have in Samamish. So I think this is somewhere we can, can be a little bit more aspirational.
This, and this could be a very contentious conversation amongst yourselves and with your community. And terms like affordable housing just sometimes just make people just afraid. It doesn't, because they don't necessarily understand what that means, or low-income housing. So the way that you work with your community and the way you describe it should be something that people will wanna say, yeah, that sounds good. I mean, you're gonna have to think about how you, because just among yourselves, you have, you actually have quite a lot of alignment here, but you have different areas of emphasis.
If I may, just really quickly, if, if we're really serious about diversity, part of diversity is socio-economic diversity. And I think if we're gonna say that we want to be a diverse community, then it should include all types of diversity, and we should have policies that will support that.
Yeah, I think part of it, though, Pam, too, is support a diverse community that already exists or create a diverse community. That is.
I think we should.
They're not the same thing.
That's fair. I thought we were trying to create a diverse and inclusive community. And if we, if we are serious about the D and we're serious about the I, then I think we need to have policies that support that.
That's the serious part, though. You and I might be serious, I'm not sure where the residents would fall on that.
That's fair. And I will say, too, that I don't think the only way to solve this is for the city to have to purchase land. I think that there's five.
Okay, this, this one needs more discussion.
Amazon and Microsoft have put up $1 billion to create housing in this area for the, for people that they have displaced through their growth. So there are, there are dollars out there to do this.
All right, see how fun this is? Okay, so, moving on to something else, I'm just gonna move you off of that, because we could be there all night, right? And what I put a note in there is that you all need to talk about this a little bit more as a council. Okay, so let's go for finance. Financial stability, sustainability, financial sustainability, sustainability. This is all about financial stability, okay? All of these are, so that's. So. Okay, what is, and just, you know, you each in your own minds have an idea about what, how you would define financial sustainability. I mean, I know how I would define it, but, you know, that's, I'm not one of you. So how would you define financial sustainability?
The way I would look at this is that we have multiple revenue resources besides property taxes.
Okay, so diverse revenue base?
Yes.
Okay.
That is, that continues to be productive. That we can forecast.
Less regressive forms of revenue.
Say that again?
Less regressive forms of revenue.
Okay.
We just talked about, you know, people getting taxed out of their community. We need to make sure we have ways to, you know, offset that and prevent that.
So, and how you implement revenue sources sometimes can mitigate the, you know, that.
I did not write that, write this down as one of my issues, but when I think about the finances of the city, and I, probably one of the toughest times in our life, my life, living here in Samamish, was the recession of 2008, when the property market, just the bottom of it, fell out for everybody, and people were upside down on their homes. And that was probably like a Great Depression. But one of the saving graces was that the city was financially sound. We had no loans, we had no outstanding debt. And the city was one of the few cities in the area that was in the black that whole time. Right, so, and I think that's not anything to be scoffed at or to be trifled with. And we may or may not be heading into some turbulent times ahead. So I think it's prudent for us to remember some of our history and why the city has been financially so successful is because it was managed and has been managed so prudently. And managing kind of debt load going forward is really important, considering we may be going into another difficult time.
So, I said, adjust to changing economic conditions. And part of that is adjusting, was being able to withstand and live through a recession. And there's a lot of ways to do that. Part of it is diversity of your revenue base, part of it is planning, reserves, and things like that, and, you know, living within your means. So is that adjusting to changing economic conditions? Okay, less regressive, diverse, productive revenue sources, what else?
You, you already said this once, but I think I have it written down on my, that operations is funded through recurring revenues, and capital projects are funded separately.
Okay, ongoing services are funded with ongoing revenue.
And capital projects have, can have one-time revenue sources.
So capital projects and things like, which is studies, things like that, that are maybe consultant studies that you contract for, so.
One-time, you could call them one-time expenses, if you will.
Right, yeah.
Have, you know, different funding, can have and should not be pulled from our operating budget.
Like roads, roads.
And I do like the changing economic conditions, because I think part of planning for, you know, future economic conditions, if it's, if we're going into a period of a lot of inflation, that's something to consider as well, is how do, how do we financially plan for that? Because that's actually very different than when you're in a stagnant inflationary period.
One of them was a revenue loss, the old one was, you know, the revenue bottom went out, and this is now is an expense issue, inflation, and it's hitting everybody.
Because you might actually spend a lot now, because it's a lot cheaper. When you pay it off 10 years from now, it's not that expensive, so.
The cost of money, yes. I'm gonna get back to this. So this is, financial stability is, and, so one person said that this was economic development. In other words, that's one of the things that you would do to enhance your revenue base. And you know, it's funny, because the last, the reason you probably made it through the last recession, the 2008 recession, is because you're so reliant on property tax. Property tax didn't go anywhere. That property tax was always there. Sales tax is what lost, and now it's, you know, so property tax is a, it doesn't grow very much, and, but it's steady Eddie, it's just the steadiest thing you've got.
Unfortunately, in a high inflationary time, it does not keep pace.
It doesn't, exactly.
But diversifying our revenue stream can also, that economic development can also be, by diversifying the types of properties we have, that also diversifies that revenue as well, right? Commercial property tax is a lot higher than residential, and that can actually help to offset people's personal or residential property taxes.
Okay, so I'm gonna say promote economic activity that enhances, enhances resources? Oh, Retusha.
Oh, really? Is that just? Oh, yes.
Okay, this may be a technical difficulty? Okay, okay.
The other thing, if you're gonna be promoting economic activity, which I like that part of the statement, is I would also, in a point sale, so with the emerging of online shopping and being able to collect the tax from point of delivery, Samamish should probably promote online shopping.
Right, because during the pandemic, yeah.
It's a trade-off.
You gotta, there are some trade-offs. I'm just saying, if you're gonna.
Uh-oh. Okay, and this is a more of a to-do online, and, but you're right. So during the pandemic, that's what saved you. And a lot of, a lot of cities just, they unexpectedly, they really thought they'd have a big drop in sales tax. But the point of sale, change in that law?
Huge.
Yeah, it's huge, and so. Yeah. Yeah, right. Like, some of the other, like Renton, not so much, they, because they have the big box stores, you don't. Okay, so.
Right, we didn't lose revenue, because we didn't have to close big box stands or restaurant, or, you know, storefronts. I mean, some of our chains did leave, but, you know, that's.
Is that the silver lining to the?
One of them.
Pardon?
Sorry, Kent. No, sorry, no, no big deal.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna reinforce the tape on these things. Okay, what else about financial sustainability?
Well, I think this is where, you know, we have a whole separate sort of efficiency of government. I would say financial sustainability is also not just about the revenue side, but the cost management side as well. Right?
And so that, does that get into efficient government?
Kinda. Right, because I do think if you're really, if we're really calling it financial sustainability, if that's really our, our header, then I think it's, it's both sides. It's a cost management as well as a revenue management side.
And it's living within your means, whatever your means are. You decide what your means are, how much you have, and then you live within that. So how would you say right now you're doing with that? You say you're doing pretty good, not so good? Make any faces here.
It's looking better.
Don't give them, don't give them a sneak preview of the budget, okay?
We do have a very good. We do have a very good staff in the finance area that have done wonderful work and strive mightily to try to inform us.
And?
Of our, of our income statements, our P and L.
Okay.
They've done a really good job of helping us understand where we've done well. But we also are keenly aware of the fact that the reason why our budget is in the black right now is because they, staff hasn't been hired. That is about to shift and change. And that is not, that is not sustainable.
We've also been funding capital projects out of our recurring revenue sources for many years. So finding different revenue sources for that will help as well. So we're, we're doing okay, but not as good as we used to. And we need to flatten the curve, so to speak.
And I have to say, you've had so much change in your, your, your council, in your staff, your city manager, you know, that had, I think repercussions about keeping track of things. But getting on the right track, that would be a good thing.
So I would just put something in there about, yeah, government efficiency, you know, having a way to sort of, you know, review that periodically. I mean, the budget is one, you know, reviewing the budget is one way. But how do we, how do we help to make sure we're continuing to operate at the best cost-effective way?
Well, and that transparency part, because at the end of the day, the residents expect us to manage the money correctly. So we are all accountable for that.
And you're right, they do expect, in fact, and I always say that it's getting, getting public involvement in the budget process is one of the hardest things to do because they really just want you to take care of it. That's kind of your job. And they, they don't understand it well enough. And they don't, it doesn't, you know, when you start talking about finance to people, their eyes glaze over, and they just don't want to talk about it. So but it's really, I mean, your budget is really a lot like their budget. They just don't see it that way. You know, it's the same thing. Okay, I'm going to move on to, let's see, how are we doing here? Ratuja, oh, oh, hi, welcome back.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I mean, outage.
Did you have something that you wanted to say that you didn't?
No, I think I heard at the start, you know, when we're talking about the financial, having different source of income or different source of revenues. I think I agree with all of that. I don't think I've had anything different to add at this point for finances.
Okay, so you want to, where do you want to go next? Transportation? Okay, you got it. Thank you.
She's very decisive.
Yeah, decisive is good. Well, I think it's good because I'm decisive. That's just me. Okay, so improve sustainability, performance and efficiency for all forms of mobility and transportation. So that's a, that's a good, good start, broad statement. Has a lot of good stuff in it. Transportation master plan is a to-do? Yes. And this is transportation, performance, efficiency and sustainability. So this is the same as this one. And transit center is a to-do. Now, so when you say, you say you want a transit center, is the associated goal with that to improve accessibility of transit or the availability of transit or encourage greater use of transit?
All of that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, what she said. Okay.
I mean, some of those goals are not just about the transit itself, but what transit does, right? It's an environmental and sustainability issue. It's a cost issue. Transit is less expensive. If, if transit is available and people don't have to own three cars, it's less expensive. So it is a cost issue as well.
So encourage alternative transportation modes. And enhance the transit, specifically the, I think enhancing the transit, that's kind of a to-do, to get a transit, because you're not kind of, you're not necessarily in charge of that. But I think the goal seems to work regionally.
We have some advocating to do.
Regionally? Yeah, okay.
Control choke points in the city. So when it comes to transportation, we have to advocate with regional partners to improve.
I couldn't hear whoever was talking. Was that Ken?
Your mic's not on.
Sorry, sorry.
No problem.
Yeah, just I was saying that we have to advocate with regional partners to address our choke points to the city, to improve our transportation, our network, the systems.
Okay, and so the other thing I saw here is efficient transportation system. What does that mean? I mean, I know what I think it means, but whoever wrote that sticky note, what do you mean, efficient, efficient transportation system?
I put that down. I meant efficient in terms of level of service.
Okay.
I'm wondering, does, does public-private partnerships show up anywhere here? Because I know that's already happening in a little bit, not, I don't know if it's directly with the city or not, but you know, I know, for example, Microsoft uses the Central Washington to commute, to kind of have people park there. And also, Amazon has a couple locations. And I'm just wondering, does that play into this as well? And then if there are any sort of more partnerships that we can do. I think what I didn't hear mentioned here is also the last mile. I think that's an issue with many of us who would actually love to break transit, but again, have to get into our car to get to the transit center. And I am very interested in having, again, public-private partnerships for that last.
But we do have a last mile option that's already running, which is the metro, that little small metro, community metro bus that's running. And it's part of a trial that runs in Sammamish and Wanita. So maybe the expansion of that or the greater, you know, creating a greater awareness of that service. Because my son uses that every day as his last mile piece of transportation. And, and then starting first of September, anyone under 18 can ride metro for free. And that's something that's, you know, that's another, you know, option for us. But so I think we, we have some last mile options. We just need to encourage its usage and advertise it more widely.
And expand it because it actually stops just north of Eastlake High School. So it actually doesn't help most of the Eastlake students. So it's, it's actually limited in its, but it is an option. So again, the advocacy becomes pretty real, right?
But it goes all the way south to the Essequo Transit Center, too.
Exactly.
So up to the Highlands. So it's kind of hitting where the transit centers are, too. And, and it operates like an Uber. You have an app on your phone and you just call it.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I've taken it many times.
So, you know, and, you know, getting the youth involved with alternative transportation, you got to make it cool. It's got to be, it can't just be, you know, it's got to be something that they want to do and it's a cool thing to do.
If we're talking about multimodal transportation, I think, you know, and we're talking about having a transportation master plan, we should also make sure that we have something along the lines of a sidewalk master plan or a bike lane master plan so that we can, knowing that there's like the Marymore Station opening.
That should be part of it.
How do we get people there on bikes? And, you know, walking is a form of transportation. We should prioritize sidewalks. You know, we talked about schools. We talked about, you know, maybe sidewalk, specifically sidewalks to parks.
Absolutely.
In the draft of our. Sorry, in the, in the transportation master plan draft that we have, sidewalks are called out very much in it.
It's actually multi, all the multimodals in there. So it should be, you're right, it should be a comprehensive transportation.
The work has been done. We just need to complete it.
The last mile.
Yeah, yeah. But, but the, but the TMP, we have a draft of it. We just need to approve it.
Well, it, yeah.
Right, or.
Got to be updated and.
Sure. Okay, think, think about that comprehensive plan cycle and your comprehensive plan and the transportation element and the timing of that. And so you're kind of ahead of it and you're going to be behind it. I don't know.
The TMP was, it was drafted like in 2020, so it's not.
Yeah.
That old.
Okay, does it, does it meet, does it meet these things? Does it meet these, these kinds of aspirational things?
It addresses all of them. It's just not finished. So it stopped in 2018.
No, 2020.
And it, it needs to be finished. So it needs its own last mile.
Okay.
But, but, but yes, and I think to Deputy Mayor Lamb's point, it's really important that it does address all of the multimodal and all of the new things that will be coming online, like light rail. And it probably doesn't address as much things like the community ride, things like Uber, even bike or scooter shares.
Scooters.
Right?
Man, they're all over Seattle.
Right, so those are all options to help people get to transit.
So I'll put scooters, question mark, because some people love them and some people hate them. But they actually, well, you live, you have a hilly environment.
Yeah.
Here, and so.
So does Seattle. And I see them on Capitol Hill, having come up, Spring, Cherry, James.
Yep, the E-bikes too, yeah.
Because that makes that a little bit more approachable.
It kind of equalizes so many more people being able to ride.
Yep.
In this area with all the hills.
Yeah. Okay. Kaylee, anything else here? Moving on.
I mean, it's 8:35. She's the mayor.
We have a whole hour.
The ability is just going to be like.
Nah, it's not going to be so bad, really. So safety. Okay, so. All right. Okay, so these things kind of do go together. So safety is about preparedness, prevention and response, right?
Mitigation.
Mitigation. Yeah. Okay, so, so you want to, emergency preparedness, talk about that a little bit. So you could have a really specific goal saying that all households in Sammamish have three-day supply of water and food or, you know, whatever that standard is.
More going to be like 14 days is really what you're really going to need.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is all encompassing. I know, you know, we have plans that need to be reviewed and updated. We have, I mean, just lots of things. And community preparedness is a hard thing because you really are, you need to rely on.
Well, because, and normally that comes out of your, like, fire and emergency services and police departments, which are contracts. But I'll bet you, do they do those things for you? Can they?
Theoretically.
Preparedness?
We do have, our emergency preparedness does come out of Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Okay.
Although we lost a resource internally, and basically that person's now at Eastside Fire and Rescue. So the question mark now becomes, okay, that's less expensive for us because it's a cost sharing now. However, are we missing that focus because we don't have that individual in-house? So I think that's, that is my question mark.
And we don't have an emergency preparedness master plan that covers all those things.
Okay.
We need to have that, right? We need to have something that covers all of it and we don't.
I mean, we do, but it's like minimum template, you know?
Right, it's more of a template. It doesn't actually have the details that we need to really make it happen.
So that's planned. And that's, it is a big thing. It is a big deal. It is also something that you can contract for, to have somebody help you build that, that knows how to do that. So you don't have a lot of in-house resource for that, but you can, that could be a project. Okay, so a prepared community? Is that, okay, resilient?
Resilient, but also I would say, I don't, does communications go with that, too? Because it's not just.
It's a part of it, sure.
I guess it's just part of it.
Education.
People actually know what to do.
Right, education and communication is definitely going to be part of the plan, right? For, for sure. And coordination too, right? Particularly with the school districts, because the odds of something happening during the school day are probably reasonable. And they all have plans. So how do our plans?
Mesh with.
Work with and in conjunction with all of their plans.
And regional. So it's not just us. It's us and Redmond and.
Right. Because the disaster doesn't pay attention to the borders, right?
And that's why you have mutual aid. And, you know, and it's built in, there's a King County emergency management plan that you're all, you're all in there somewhere. Okay, so prepared community, resilient community, focus on education and communication. So people understand what they need to be doing. And regional coordination. So an emergency management system, emergency prepared system that is regionally coordinated, focuses on education, that is, and prepares youth to be a resilient community.
Do we also put safety in here? Like, or is the transportation safety part of transportation? Like when I think of like the sidewalks and the safe routes to school, is that part of transportation or is that part of safety?
That's a good question. What do you think?
They're very related. I mean, because the, arguably, we could reduce the speed limits, for example, around schools. I keep that 24/7 so that it's consistent and so that people aren't caught.
But when I, yeah, I also think that like.
It can also help with throughput of traffic, too.
Yeah.
So for traffic flow.
So that, I think it might be, I think that's a good thing to do under transportation, safe school, walk routes, speeds and.
Because there's also lighting as well, right? A lot of school happens in the dark.
Yeah, school zone cameras. Let me just tell you, I did that one with a couple cities and it, it pays for itself. You just have to get your police department.
I am a big proponent of that. Get those speed cameras out there.
It's transportation.
And intersection cameras. Let's do it.
Yeah, people don't. Yeah, well, and it's, it's way, it's way easier to do than red light cameras. Red light cameras are universally hated. But school zone cameras, I mean, who's going to argue with that? Yeah, I should be able to speed in school zones. No. And then, and you have a video and it's kind of cut and dry. So, and it really does reduce speeds. I mean, it does have that impact.
I would, I would say under safety, we should, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to talk about the traffic cameras. We should be able to look out, like when there's a snowstorm, to have traffic cameras at the intersections. I mean, that's a safety issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to work, let's say, is, is the route I'm going to take safe?
We used to. I don't think it's operational anymore.
Kirkland has it. That's, that's a big investment. And it's something that you have to manage in-house. But again, it's, it's a to-do. It's not a goal as much as it's a to-do. But to have transportation that meets a variety of environmental conditions.
The other thing I, because I always kind of think of it as to the Constitution and it's like, what do I am governing is life. And when I think about, you know, protecting people's life, clean water, clean air, safe food, and then the others, you know, I need police and fire. So when I, I hope I don't need them, but when I do need them, I want them to be there. So for us to have kind of this safe environment, we do need to have, I mean, I would call it a top-notch police force or a top-notch police department. You know, we need to have a top-notch fire facilities. And, you know, EFNR needs to be one of, if they're not the best, then let's look for the best. But they are, they're really good. So, I mean, the response that EFNR does for the things that have happened over just the last two years that I've watched is just amazing. So I think that should continue and be a part of it.
So emergency response.
I, I think it's even more than that, right? I think, I think their, police and fire are part of the community. So it's not just emergency response. It's kind of, I mean, I guess.
It's our SROs. It's, it's, you're right, it's a lot more than just.
Yeah, mental health at that. Yeah, mental health, and that.
Yep. It's the safety of the community, and that's what they bring to it.
Well, and I do think that's where we have to look at policy and SLAs, because, right, even our former chief agreed that, you know, looking at what the needs of the community are, sometimes you want different people responding, right? And, and we don't have those options in the city right now, right? We, we really only have police to respond. We don't have mental health professionals to, to respond, and so those are things we need to look at, and I, I kinda feel like we need to look at the, the SLAs, right? Because while we definitely want top-notch, you also, from a financial sustainability, you want your SLAs to be just right, right? You want, you want them to be what they need to be, but you don't necessarily need all of them to be more. And, and with safety, there's not always as big of a window, but there are times when, you know, we can overrespond, and we don't necessarily want that. So we wanna make sure that we align our SLAs with the needs of the community to have the optimal outcomes.
Okay.
Well, I think also just coordinated, so that, that, we have all these different contract services, they need to be really well coordinated amongst themselves, so that we don't have a police car and a fire truck at the same thing.
Well, you might, because you have to.
We do, no, we do.
Right, well, and sometimes, right, that we need to look at things like, we once had a, a fire truck show up to a, the, what do you call it, urgent care. Someone needed to be transported to the emergency room, and they sent the fire truck instead of an ambulance. So again, making sure we do have the right level of coordination, so we get the right, the right equipment to get the, the job done. But yeah, that's where I think we look at those SLAs and that coordination.
And I think the public safety units are, do work together most of the time really well. And, you know, sometimes if there's a big collision, they'll bring in a fire truck to block the traffic, but you have the officers there, and then you have the ACARS, so it's a, it's a, it's a really.
But it is a big part of the, can we put, like, lighting and, and other connectivity things in safety as well?
So that would be.
Like, streetlights?
Yeah, safety by design, it's called, oh, what's it called? Environmental, it's how, it's how you do things, like lighting, landscaping.
Yes.
Striping, yeah.
I like that, I like safety by design, and make sure we have that environmental element in there, because we now have the capability so that streetlights don't have to be on all the time, they can only be on when there's, like, motion detected or whatever, so we don't have light pollution and things like that, so.
And actually, safety by design is something that you integrate into your land use policies, right?
We also have retrofits to do on safety.
And are we talking about safety in terms of just human beings, or everybody living in Sammamish?
What, what, I didn't catch that.
Yeah, I think everybody, yeah.
Everybody, yeah. So I, I think, you know, for some of us, our pets and other, even wildlife are, are, you know, very important to our community and city, so even when we're talking about, you know, lighting or water quality, you know, I think we need to sort of make sure that it's safe for everyone, and not just for human beings.
So infrastructure, everything about your infrastructure, actually, if you think about it, it's communication systems, it's safe places to travel, safe places to move, the ability to respond to emergencies, it's a, it's a big thing. And actually, most cities spend most of their money on public safety. That's where most of the money goes.
I know.
So that's, you know, that's kinda how it is. All right. Can we, let's move on. I don't know whether I wanna do trust, I think I wanna do trust and transparency last. Can we just, just tackle this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so these are the to-dos, and so. Some of them are very specific. Preservation of wildlife, address climate change, stop climate change. Okay, there's these. Okay. All right, so. Protection, some, one of this is protect. Environment. This is protection of lakes and streams, but if you say, protect the environment, and if you said protect the natural environment, that would encompass, I think, all those things, maybe? So that would be trees, water. Lakes. And you do have a lake. Yeah. So, um, address climate change, that's, that's big. But to, but if you were thinking, if you were trying to change it, if you were trying to protect it. Prevent climate change, I guess, how would you, how would you, how would you talk about that? I mean, it's happening, and so, I, I mean, this is a policy thing, maybe it's something about develop policies that. No, I don't wanna say stop climate change, because you're not gonna do it with your policies.
Well, greenhouse gas, I mean, you could do electric car policy, you could do.
Well, first, we need to measure the greenhouse gas emissions, right? And then develop strategies to, you know, go down the line and get the biggest bang for our buck. Because first, we need to know where, what to tackle the most, right? Is it, is it cars, is it the built environment? If it's the built environment, what specifically, right? Do we, do we stop pumping, you know, do we have a policy that says no more fossil fuels? So, you know, no more natural gas being pumped into homes, right? That's one way to tackle it, right?
So develop policies and strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions?
Yep.
That's, that's the big thing.
Do we wanna talk about, like, a carbon emissions audit, you know, kinda understanding?
That's actually being done by King County, so we should have that this month, or next month.
But will it be particular, you know, it.
Per city, yeah.
It will be per city, okay, great.
So if you do, if you have a, if you do, if you get a climate action plan, that's one of the things, is to measure where you're at now, and then being, being able to see changes. So I got preservation of wildlife, I got that in there, that's the natural environment, protect the environment.
An issue that comes up often is, and this may just be an action, as opposed to being a, a policy or a goal, is dealing with known and new drainage issues, you know, stormwater and that, you know, we're continually seeing wetter and wetter winters and springs, and I think we're in an El Nino era at the moment, where we're gonna have lots of rainfall. We just came out of one, and I think we're, we're supposed to have another one this coming winter and fall, and it's dealing with those flooding and kinda stormwater issues that we have in certain sectors of our cities, some of the older sectors of our city that we, we still haven't fully dealt with. And it, and it comes up in public comment over and over and over again, and I think it's, yeah, and it's time for us to kind of really tackle this.
We need to consider staffing, too. We've talked about hiring an urban forester.
Okay, so, um, so that would be like a forestry plan?
We have an urban forestry management plan, we just.
Yeah, we're gonna move to implementation.
Okay.
But when we look at staffing, we should, again, look broader from an environmental standpoint. Is it just the forest management, or do we actually want someone who works on sustainability, right? Redmond and Issaquah both have staff dedicated to sustainability.
And that person could look at a lot more things. It can look at food waste, it can look at how, you know, ways that we can reduce our emissions in some of the equipment that we use in parks and rec.
We should be net zero, we should have a goal that the city operations are carbon net zero by a certain date, right?
But we have such a stringent tree retention policy in the city, and we are one of the most stringent in the region, right? 25% in the state. But we don't have an expert in-house that can advise, and most of that tree canopy is on private land. So we don't have anyone that supports the city goals, who can advise our residents on how they can maintain part of the tree canopy that they own on their land, and I think that's also another thing that comes up in public comment over and over and over again.
Trees, yeah.
Residents don't know who to go to to get reliable advice, or lots of people call themselves arborists, but are probably not, they're just, will cut down your tree. So that's one thing that's called for in the Urban Forest Master Plan, and also partnering with, for TARA and organizations like that, who could come in and give us the expertise that we don't have, and give us the advice, and also give advice to our residents on a one-to-one basis, you know, if they have a substantial amount of trees on their property and need help.
And creating a tree sending site, so when the tree that was planted 25 years ago, that was this big when your house was built, that's now taking over your foundation, and you have to remove it, but you have to replace it with a similarly sized tree, where can you, where can you put that? Because there may, right?
That you can make a rule and say, if you, as a homeowner, take out a street tree.
There's already a rule that you have to replace it.
Replace it, right.
But the problem is, you can't always replace it, because the parcels are often very small, so having a tree sending site would allow people to replace those trees, but maybe not on their property, you see?
Okay, it's, okay, so, okay, so that's a program, that's to do, and you call it a tree.
Sending site.
Sending, tree sending center.
Yep.
It's almost like a transfer of development rights.
It is, yes. It's a transfer of tree rights. I would think it would be cool if we had a, a process or a policy that whenever we are going to implement a new policy, we have a checklist of sustainability things, that we make sure that our policy is either going to improve sustainability, or not make it worse, or whatever those goals are, so that we don't have unintended consequences in policies we implement.
Okay, so a checklist to evaluate environmental impacts.
Or maybe even projects in general, not just policies, but projects, too.
They call that an EIS, right? It's big. So this one here says, this one here, that was good, accelerate environmental sustainability and actions to combat climate change, to meet state and county goals ahead of mandated deadlines. Now, that is, that is an objective. It's, it's, you know, one of those to-dos, you're gonna meet those, but meeting state and county goals is part of your goal, I think, right? I think you all agree with that?
Well, the state, it's a law now, so I don't even think it's an option.
So that's just a, how do you do it? All right. Okay, for the biggest, the biggest thing here, so let's take some of these things and make sure that your urban forest management plan, got it? Urban forest plan, so do you, do you not have an urban forest plan?
No, we don't.
You have one, but you haven't implemented it, okay. Okay, so, and urban forester, okay. Stormwater. Oh, I'll come back to that. Climate action plan, we got that. Stormwater and address critical area drainage issues. So, do you have a surface water master plan?
We have basing plans, but not all of them are completed yet.
Okay.
So we need to continue the basing plan process for all of our basing.
Okay.
I think the big one right now is about engaged and creating coordination with Issaquah. Is that right, Scott? Is that the one that's coming?
I think you might, I think that is right.
That makes two of us.
We also talked about having a committee for this.
No.
The Climate, Climate Action Plan Committee.
Love it.
Forest, and this is the forest, and this is the forest. Okay, so stormwater, you have a master plan, critical areas, so what do you wanna say about, how does this, I mean. Really, what you want to do is to be able to protect, protect the environment, and then protect the built environment by.
Well, I think, I think that might be my, my sticky, that you have in your hand there, and what I meant by that was, this was a piece of public comment that keeps coming up about areas in our city that stormwater and its drainage issues, they seem to be these persistent drainage issues that happen when we have large amounts of rainfall, and we still haven't tackled them yet.
Because there are areas that were built long, long ago, before we had.
Yeah, they were like the first flats.
The stormwater code that we have today, so.
Yeah.
We need those retrofit projects.
Right, we might have old septics in there and that kinda thing, too, right?
Does that need to be update, updated?
No, it's really, I think there's already a plan, it's about being able to execute on the retrofit projects. I'm pretty sure there's already.
A lot of these, yeah, we have a plan.
But we're just not executing to it, it's just sitting there.
We're not, like, doing it, yeah.
The unfunded plans.
Yeah. Okay, so the Emerald Necklace you had on our environment, but.
Yeah.
Say more about that, because as I understood it, you described it, is it, is it transportation?
It can be all of those things, so it's the concept of, of being able to get around the outskirts of our city, from north to south, not via the lake, but the other side. If you so choose, and you could do that on foot or on bike, not, not with a car, so it would be a way of being able to hike around the perimeter, the border of our city, through various means. So we have, connecting a lot of the trails that already exist, and connecting it maybe up with sidewalks that already exist, so being able to kinda have that ability to walk around the border of our city.
Okay, so that is a multimodal transportation project. So I think it kinda belongs under here.
And it's also part of transfer development rights, it's kind of, you know, in that whole mix as well.
It's kinda how you do it. That's what's one of the tools you use to achieve it.
Because it's a concept that's been, you know, it's been talked about in Sammamish for a very long time, and I think it's, it's time we did something about it, you know, something.
I think we need to have a line item that says.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna say, we're almost close to closing the loop on the Emerald Necklace, right? I think we have a lot of trails built, I think there's just one small portion where either we don't have an easement, or need to work with King County, or with the homeowners to close that loop.
Yeah.
I do, sorry, more than that, I do wanna ask Marilyn one procedural question again. I think, I just wanted to make sure that here we're not solutioning, and I think some of the things that are, I think we're talking about are solutions to our problems, are the goals that we want to achieve, and are we also just trying to answer why we want a certain goal? So if you could just sort of.
Yeah.
Maybe retrade our goal, what our goal for today's.
Okay, so, yes.
Goal set.
All those things. So what you have here is, what I'm trying to get at here on these statements, these goal statements, that is the why. That is the why you're doing it. All these things down here are the what you're going to do. And so we're trying to get to the heart of the why, what's important to you, and what are you trying to achieve? So, so we're, and from here, what we'll do is we'll try to, you're gonna get a couple things out of this, eventually, you're gonna get goal statements, they're pretty broad and pretty high level, and you're gonna have a whole lot of to-dos, and then you're going to need to obviously prioritize that based on resources, what's most important, what, you know, you know, that prioritization thing, important and urgent? You know, some of these things are important, but not urgent, some of them are urgent, but not, not so important, you have to, you have to sort of sort them out that way.
We don't have on here conserving water, or kind of the reduce, reuse, and recycle, which I think are also pretty critical elements to the environment, right?
Yeah, so I had protect natural environment, water.
Okay, I'm sorry, I kinda understood water as like the lakes and streams, as opposed to conserving the water, but also reduce, reuse, and recycle, I think is also an important one, right? That, that gets to, you know, eliminating plastics, those types of things. And I really wanna write, just eliminate fossil fuels somewhere, please. It's gotta go, they gotta go, man.
So smart use and preservation of resources. All right. Okay. We're getting there, we're almost there. We only have a couple left here. You're done? Kaylee was done a long time ago.
One more, one more.
So, we save the best for last. So, we save the best for last, trust and transparency. I think this is part of that. This is land use. Okay, so let's talk about trust and transparency. And part of that was communication, was communication with amongst yourselves, with staff, with the community, engagement, right? And, so, but for some of you, and you, you approach that in different ways. Okay, so when you're talking about community engagement, you're talking about going out and getting people involved and informed and, you know, being part of decisions. When you're talking about trans, communicate, trust and communication on the council, that's a very, that's the thing you have to do for yourselves. You just can't say, "We are going to be trusting and we're going to communicate well." It's, you, you have to spend a little bit of time defining what that looks like, you know, what agreements you have about how to work together. And, you know, out of that, sometimes you get a code of conduct or something like that, again, that is aspirational, but that you all agree on is that this is how we're going to work together, and I'll be watching when I'm not doing it, and I'll talk to you when I think you're not doing it, because we all agree to this, and, but it's not going to be a gotcha kind of thing. It's going to be, we always strive. And that's, that's just a whole different work that you can do as a council. I think that you are in as good a position as you've been in a long time to do that work, though, just talking to you. So what do you think about that? So, so do the next, remember the slides? Wake up. Mike didn't get enough sleep last night, so he, he's asleep at the wheel.
And we do have council rules too, that we keep talking about, we want to talk about.
Yeah.
But we do have them.
Okay. Well, there's, there's rules, there's rules and procedure, and there's sort of standards, standards of conduct about you, you won't speak ill of each other.
And that's in there.
That's in there.
Yeah.
We should, we need to update them.
Take a look at it and then implement it. Because that's only for you. You have to do that yourself, right?
Right, we just, we, I would like to update them.
You would like to update it? Okay, okay. So...
And I think, at least for me, the trust and transparency is about the community, right? I mean, yes, we, we have to, and I don't think we can get trust and transparency with the community probably until that happens with us, but to me, it's really about the trust and transparency with the community and making sure that, you know, we have all of our, all of our guidelines are, you know, and policies are, are published, and if changes are made, those are clearly communicated, right? So the public knows what our policies are, whether it's around, you know, I don't know, communications, whether it's around public records requests, whether it's around our own policies and code of conduct as the council, whether it's around, you know, how we choose people to be on commissions, right? All of those things need to be published, easily found, and then there's a process by which, if any changes are made, how are those changes tracked and communicated to the public, so people know when something changed and, and even maybe the why, but at least that it did, and when did it change? I think that's really important, right? How we conduct surveys, having, you know, policies. And I know, you know, I say all this, I know Scott's working on a lot of this, but I think all of that is really important and really being able to get that out to the community.
And just to add on to that, like how we operate and turn...
One more slide, am I? Okay, so...
Oh, I was just saying that how we operate and how we speak with one another, I mean, it's obvious to the public, and so once we, in my opinion, once we get that all like refined and we are respectful, it, it reflects and the community will see that.
So I'm going to say demonstrate civility is one way of thinking about it. You're the model. Okay, so this is about, and the only reason I brought this is because you talked about community involvement so much, and this is a model that I use, and it's kind of one of the gold standards of the community involvement world. And it's a spectrum, it says depending on what you're trying to decide or what you're, the problem you're trying to be solved, you will involve people at different levels. Sometimes you will just inform them. There's an emergency, there's a disaster, and you're going to tell them what to do, right? Sometimes you're going to listen to them, you're going to consult them and say, "Well, what do you think?" And then you're going to go off and, you know, craft the solutions. And then it keeps going. Involve, and the, the underneath there, that is the promise that you, that you'll work directly with the public and that you understand their concerns. And in that, you want to be able to show them how their input was used, okay? So what's the problem to be solved? Who's the decision maker? Who are the stakeholders? How are we going to get to them? You got to go to where they are. That's a whole, part of their DEI thing. Collaborate, you move to collaborate, and that's when they have a very active role. You have like an advisory committee or something like that, and that is actively involved in coming up with a solution. Empower is when you place it in the hands, and really the easy example of that is a ballot measure. Anything that you take to the vote is something that you give, empower the public to do, whatever you say we will do. Collaborate is more of a, we will, if you group come up with a solution, we will implement that, okay? But you're going to, working with them all the time, so there's a, there's a whole lot of steps to this about, you know, really understanding the right level of involvement for different topics, because they're, you know, not all of them, you know, there's some things that you have to do, right? And so, and, and that is sometimes an informed thing. We're going to tell you what it is that we have to do. Maybe we can talk to you about, let's talk a little bit about how we're going to do that. Okay, so you can get, you know, you can move up the, but that's, this is a whole different, this is a whole different thing, but I just wanted to have this available to you. And they're going to get, have this PowerPoint, right? So you're going to get all these great pictures, visuals, and, but there is a way to approach this that is, that can be very, very powerful and very inclusive. And so, because there's, you know, just the techniques, you use different techniques, you know, for some things you're going to use an open house, for some, some things you're going to use like focus groups, some things you're going to use a survey, and some things you're going to use small group work or, you know, something like that. So, so that's just a glance, public involvement at a glance. So I just wanted you to have that. Okay, so, this is all trust and transparency, and that's going to go over there. Engage community in decision, increase transparency. You know, in some places, you know, you all each have to say, when you're all going forward and you're all, "Oh, yeah, we're going to do this," and some of you, one of you has to point yourself as a person, go, "Wait, what is the public going to think?" And I know you do that, because they'll, they'll show up if you don't stop and think about that. But, you know, for you, you know, just stopping yourself, you have a really great idea, you know, "Let's think about this a little bit. How's it going to impact people? How are they going to react to this?" So, and then I think that...
One go-do that I think would be really helpful for the council and the public would be kind of, once we get our set of goals, and maybe we start to get some key results that we all agree to, and then the staff has a chance to build a budget and a work plan, that we have a dashboard on our website where we can report that progress out. Because I think that that in and of itself will create the ability for the community to see what our goals are and chime in whether they agree with our goals or not, right? And to see, you know, where we're spending our money and we can show them, you know, this is why we, you know, are spending money here and not here because of these goals. And I think that that just creates the ability for the public to see what's going on. It creates a, a communication vehicle for us to have those really sometimes difficult or at least informative conversations, and I think that would just really help everybody kind of feel like we're all on the same page on Team Sumamish.
Team Sumamish.
Right?
Go team.
Yeah, seriously.
So, you know, I think that's kind of covered. I think there's some things here that you want to do specifically. A lot of them have to be resourced, for instance. Your capacity to do public outreach is only as good as how much staff you have to do, because it takes a lot of time and it takes a skill set. And so it's something that you can contract for, but you, you know, you have to decide how much of that wants to be in-house. Is it, you know, is it part of a, a community outreach or community communication program? You know, how do you, how do you frame that? And how do you resource it? Because it doesn't happen on its own. In fact, it's a lot of effort on the part of the staff. I mean, it's, they get great results. I mean, it's just, it feels so good when people come out and they're talking to you, and they're not yelling at you, they're talking to you, and they're, they're being helpful, and they, they feel like they're having an impact, and they can see where their ideas were used, just like when we take this stuff, and you should be able to see with whatever draft is developed, you should hopefully see your words, that they're all there, okay? That there's, there's somewhere they're reflecting in there, because it's good to be heard. So, next steps. So there's a couple ways that you can go, again, the way that I had envisioned was that there was going to be magic that happens, and, you know, we take these flip charts and we combine them and, you know, provide them, you know, put, put some, try to get statements or a series of statements. I don't know if there's any of those. The ones, the sample goal statements that you looked at, you had Issaquah, Kirkland, what was the other one? Vancouver, and there's many more out there, but did any, did the level of words...
I like that one.
Okay.
I think I would need to see them.
Yeah, okay, look at them again.
I can't remember.
Yeah.
Always ago.
It was, yeah, it was a lifetime ago. Somebody is going to need to take and compile these notes and bring you something back to look at. A real rough draft of, here's where we think, you know, a few sentences, you're saying a little bit higher level. There's going to be detail below them, that, again, the tasks that are associated with them, and so it's all going to be there, but what you want to do is, your vision is where you're headed and your, and your goals are why you're doing all these things, why you're doing an urban forestry program, why you're doing surface water management, all those things. And I think you did a good, good job capturing a lot of that. I think there's material to work with here.
Well, in order to make that happen, what, one way to do that, just, we each took a sheet home and just did...
No, that's Magic Mike.
Yes, Mike is the magic. This is the staff.
Well, yeah, and so...
I'm looking at one person.
What? Yeah. You, you could...
Why is he smiling?
You could, you could, that's Magic Mike, because how does he do everything he does? It's magic. Okay?
Wow, okay, I don't think, I'm sorry.
But...
I understand your abilities.
There are no limits to his abilities, but, yeah, so you can, you can do that, you can assign that to staff, or just, you know, hand it off to the city manager and say, "Get this, get this done. Figure out, tell us how you should get it done." And then it will come back to you and you'll, you'll do, you know, generally, does that look about right? What, what, the worst, the most painful thing that you could do is to get into a very long wordsmithing exercise where you never get done. I've been there.
That's why I want to give it to anyone.
Right, that's right.
But I think, you know, it's important that, you know, however, however they take what you said today and turn that into something that you can actually reach for and you feel good about, and that the community can understand, is, that's important. And that, that's going to take at least one iteration, okay? So it's going to, it's, you don't have to have it done. I think you've got a good start on it. So the plan is to send it back and...
Marilyn, quick question there, sorry.
Yes.
I have a quick question. So is Mike's assignment to just come up with the goals?
I think this, I think the city manager's going to assign it to somebody. That's, remember that whole, the whole flight path thing? It's like, I don't know what else Mike is doing. If he's got time, it'd be a good little exercise.
Oh, whoever is this wonderful...
But your question is, will it come back with goals, right? Isn't that what you're asking?
So is, is the, is it just going to, because I just shared like a couple documents with Mike on Teams right now. My question is, is it, is his goal, because he has these notes on the whys and the hows, is the, is the assignment, whoever takes it, to actually come up with the goals and then tie in those sort of action items to it? Or is it just, the first draft is just going to be high-level goals?
Right. There'll be high-level goals, and part of what comes back to you, so you can see, and so the, the city manager, because you, you ought to be able to see those things, some of those things in the budget to the extent that you can afford to do them. You're not going to be able to afford to do all of them, I don't think.
Well, we didn't come up with the thing in the middle, right? Like, we have the, the high-level goals and the, and the why, and we've got some tasky things on there.
Right.
But we skipped the middle part, which is those key results, right? The, what do we want to do in the next two years?
Right.
Because that's the budget that the staff has to kind of come up with, because, again, they're not going to achieve many of those high-level goals in the next budget cycle. They will, they will make progress on them. They will, they will head in that direction, but, but where do we come up with those key results?
So that, those are the objectives, technically speaking. They're called objectives, and they're who's going to do what by when. And you're going to have to prioritize, because you don't have the bandwidth to do them all. So that's going to be part of what comes back to you, is you're going to say, you know, maybe we could do a little, you know, you could do a little bit more prioritizing of it on particular tasks. But I also think that, that you need to have a sense from staff about what their bandwidth is. And, and I've, I've offered to, I will help Mike, I will. You know my, you know where to find me. You have my phone number, you have my email address, and so I can, I can help him with that.
Yeah, Marilyn and council, I think, you know, the entire leadership team has been listening tonight. Obviously, these areas cut into all of their specific departmental, the work plans that they have and the work that they do, and their sort of policy issue areas. So I think it would be a collective effort on our part to go back and try to come up with, like Marilyn was saying, a broad policy statement about what the goal is, and then some of those components about how would we achieve that particular goal? And then within that, we might potentially offer up a prioritized list that then you all can take a look at and move it around, and that will help drive what we think we might be able to accomplish over the course of the next, what the budget would cover. So that's a, that's a, that's an approach. It may not be quite as clean as that, but I think that's what we're going to strive for.
There's also, like, what if we have on our homework that we did, like, more things that we didn't cover? Because we kind of went from the real high level down to the bottom, like, is that, do you want us, Scott, to just send that to you so you see what we have? Or are you not ready for that? Because I feel like some of the, the deliverables or the, the tasks, I don't want to say they were random, but they, they were somewhat random in that, like, we didn't do a complete list of them. So they are, they are, let's say they're more examples as opposed to a complete list.
And in fact, your staff is going to come up with their own list of, so here's how you do that. Here's, in order to do this, we have to do this first. And that's, you know, where you get your professionals to weigh in on how you're going to do it, and that's an important part. So in terms of timeframe, it's not a, it's not a small task, but you, you still want to be able to somehow tie the budget to this exercise, if you can.
This will be a little bit iterative as we go through. As council knows, we are, we are rolling out the budget and we're doing departmental level presentations this year to try to get a better understanding. So this, this might be, we might be sort of going in tandem a little bit here as we get through these. We've set a bit of a lofty goal that we might have to revise about when we come back with the first run of what we've heard tonight for you all to review, but that overall, we'll be trying to get, line that up so that we get through and you all have the opportunity to finalize your goals by resolution prior to actually passing the budget. And then as we do that, we will start to pull out those things, like Marilyn was saying, to meet, to say, "Here's what's already in there that, that we think falls into this goal category." And I will just use, for example, like urban forestry. I mean, we know that's a thing, and that's, you should not be surprised to see something in the budget proposal, so just as an example, and we'll call that out when we get to it.
And you're going to probably get some public comments on this or some input, and they'll say, "Good job," or, "No, not that." What... What are you thinking?" So you need to be able to respond to that. Rituja, you've got your hand up. No? Never mind? Okay. Okay, so, you know, you're going to put your heads together and come back with a plan for how this is going to come back to them. And again, it's, it'll be a process. It's a, and it, to really work it out, so, but you do, I think you did a great job. I thought you did a lot of work today, and I think you've got some good material to work with, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's 9:25. I said 9:30 at the latest, but if, unless you want to go on talking, I'm done.
No, I'd love it if I did that.
A half hour ago, maybe an hour.
That's my bad.
I just want to say that as a newer council member, this exercise was really great because it kind of, you know, helped, I think, me at least, understand where other council members stood and, and, you know, what they're going to do. So this was very, very important. So thank you for getting this done.
Yeah, perfect, that is.
Thank you.
Good job. All right.
Yay, Team Sammamish. Let's get T-shirts made.
That's right. We are a team. Okay, are you adjourned in the meeting?
Yes, meeting adjourned. Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Bye, Rituja.
Bye.